Good evening, everybody. Thank you for participating in our 2021 ACA rate review hearing. Before we get started, just a couple of housekeeping things. First, if everyone who's not speaking could put their computer or their phone on mute, if you are calling in on the phone, it's *6. If you're on a computer, you can just mute yourself on the computer through the Microsoft Teams. And just to let everyone know, we are recording this hearing this evening, so we intend to put the hearing on our website after we get it edited down a little bit. And with that, I will turn the hearing over to Commissioner Woods.
Great. Thank you, Phil, for that introduction. Hopefully, everyone can hear me okay. Can you hear me okay? Yes. Okay, great. Well, I'll go ahead and good started. Good afternoon. I am Kareema Woods, the Commissioner of the District's Department of Insurance, Securities, and Banking, and I would like to officially call this hearing on 2021 Proposed Health Insurance Rate to Order at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, September 1st, 2020. As Phil has indicated, I'm asking that you all mute your lines or your computer if you are participating via Teams whenever you are not speaking. Thanking you in advance for your assistance on that. This will, as you know, help to prevent background noise from disrupting the meeting and ensure the best sound quality during the call. So again, thank you. I would like to take a moment to set the stage for the hearing by describing our department, the purpose of the hearing, and the district's health insurance rate review and approval process. A little bit about the department. So the department regulates financial services industries in the district. That includes insurance, securities, and banking institutions. Our mission is threefold. First, to cultivate a regulatory environment that protects consumers and attracts and retains financial services firms to the district. Second, to empower and educate residents on financial matters. And third, to provide financing for district small businesses. I am joined here today by a few members of my team. You've already heard from Phil Barlow, but Phil Barlow is our Associate Commissioner for Insurance, and many of you may be familiar with Phil. He's been involved in this process for many, many years and is an expert at what he does. I'm also joined by Adam Levi, who was our Assistant General Counsel, and he too has been involved in previous hearings as well. And also Howard Lebers, who is the Supervisory Insurance Examiner, who has also been heavily involved in the ACA rate hearing process. So glad to have them here with me today. In addition, we have Dave Dillon, who is an actuary from our consulting firm, Lewis &amp; Ellis, who will present information on their review of the 2021 proposed rates. So the purpose of today's hearing is to inform the public of the department's process for reviewing and approving health insurance rates and to receive comments on the 2021 proposed health insurance rates filed by the carriers offering health benefit plans in the individual and small group markets. Small groups are businesses with up to 50 full-time employees. A summary of the proposed 2021 rates along with their current proposals as a result of our actuarial review can be found on the department's website at www.disb.dc.gov. A current snapshot of the proposed rates is also available. Following my comments, Mr. Barlow will provide a brief explanation of how to use the snapshot documents. As for the hearing procedures, we will hear first from the four carriers in our individual and small group markets, then we will hear from Dave Dillon of Lewis &amp; Ellis, and then we will be followed by, and Dave will be followed by, by Mila Kaufman, the Executive Director for the D.C. Health Benefit Exchange Authority. Finally, we will hear from those individuals who have signed up prior to the hearing. Then we will hear from anyone present who did not sign up but who wishes to provide public comment, generally in the order of request. Public comment should be limited to our review process, the proposed rates or recommendations, and issues we should consider as we review the proposed rates. Comments should not address current issues with insurers or rates in effect. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less. We have an extensive list of public witnesses and want to be able to hear from all of them. If you are participating via Teams and would like to testify but did not sign up ahead of time, please raise your hand within the app, and that should be located in the bottom of the screen, and we will call upon you later to speak. And if you have phoned in only, we will ask at the end for anyone else who wishes to speak, and we will acknowledge you at that time. So a little bit about the ACA background. So the Patient Protection and Affordable Care Act, often referred to as the Affordable Care Act or ACA or Obamacare, is a comprehensive healthcare reform law enacted on March 23rd, 2010. Its goal was to make affordable health insurance available to more Americans. The district enacted several laws to implement and enforce the ACA. The Reasonable Health Insurance Rate Making and Reform Amendment Act of 2010 established rate-making principles and standards as additional guidance in reviewing and approving health insurance rate filings. Specifically, the law directs me, as Commissioner, to ensure that health insurance rates or fees are not excessive, inadequate, or unfairly discriminatory. And 2014, the district enacted the Federal Health Reform Implementation and Omnibus Amendment Act of 2014, which codified in district law provisions of the ACA and its implementing regulations. The district passed the Health Benefit Exchange Authority Establishment Act of 2011, and this act established the District of Columbia Health Benefit Exchange Authority, which we also refer to as HBX. The department regulates health insurers and reviews and approves health insurance rate and form filings for all comprehensive medical products sold in the district. Once the department approves rates for individual and small group insurance plans, the HBX certifies them as qualified health plans offered for sale in the district through D.C. Health Link. The district's state-based exchange, which allows people to enroll in coverage and manage their overall health insurance plans. The ACA's major provisions were implemented in 2014. Since then, the district has been a leader in expanding access to affordable health care for our residents and small businesses. Because we leverage the ACA, more than 96% of district residents now have health coverage. And as of 2018, the District of Columbia was tied with Massachusetts for first in the country with the lowest uninsured rates, with only 3% of the total population still uninsured. Currently, there are more than 16,200 people with private health insurance through the individual marketplace, and over 5,000 employers offering coverage to more than 80,000 employees and their families through the small business marketplace. Together, nearly 100,000 people are covered by health insurance plans that are sold on the D.C. Health Link. The department uses what is known as an effective rate review program. Pursuant to U.S. Department of Health and Human Services regulations states, including the district, "With effective review programs must conduct reviews of proposed rate increases above the applicable threshold." Prior to the ACA, annual premium increases in the individual market were highly variable, and increases often averaged 10% or more at the state level. The department's review of rates under the ACA, coupled with several critical protections for consumers who purchase health insurance coverage in the individual and small group markets, have brought new levels of scrutiny and transparency to health insurance rates in those markets. Also, the increased review has resulted in some issuers lowering their rates. The increased transparency allows consumers to view rate information that was not previously available. The process starts with an insurance company submits a rate filing request to the department's insurance bureau. The rate filing is assigned to a staff member within our bureau, particularly within our actuarial division of our bureau, and that person will then review the filing. Due to the complexity of these rate filings, the division also utilizes an actuarial consulting firm that conducts the additional review of the rates and makes suggestions and recommendations to our department based upon purely actuarial analysis. These employees and consultants are subject matter experts in mathematics and the measurement and management of risk and uncertainty. They review rates based on a variety of rating factors and assumptions to help ensure that health plan rates are justified and adequate considering the coverage provided. Reasonable rates should be adequate to cover the cost of paying expected cost of medical claims and operating expenses. The division will discuss the rate filings with insurers, actuaries, and, as appropriate, recommended changes to the rate filings. Once the health actuarial division determines that the rate request is reasonable, the division recommends to the commissioner that it be approved. Conversely, and taking into full account all relevant analysis, if the division believes a rate is excessive, inadequate, or unfairly discriminatory, which is the legal standard governing the department's rate review process, it will discuss its findings with insurer and require changes to the filed rates with the department approves. The department's rate review process resulted in three out of four insurers revising their rates down from the initial filings. The department expects to finalize the 2021 rates by the middle of September and will post the final approved rates on our website at disb.dc.gov. So today, you'll hear from four major insurance companies. Aetna, CareFirst, Blue Cross Blue Shield, Kaiser Permanente, and United Care. They filed health plan offerings for individuals, families, and small businesses on D.C. Health Link. Overall, 188 plans were filed compared to last year, which was approximately 181. The number of small group plans increased from 156 to 163, and individual plans remained at 25. The department's rate review over the last few months has resulted in reducing the insurance company's proposed rate increases by 2.2% on average for individual plans and 2.9% on average for small group plans, with some reducing their proposed rate increases as much as 20%. To meet the standard I mentioned earlier, the final approved rates are not excessive, inadequate, or unfairly discriminatory. And to be transparent for members of the public about how the rate increases are reviewed and approved prior to a new plan year, the department improved its rate review process to include public hearings. And I've heard from many that they find that these public hearings are quite valuable, so we're pleased to be able to join you all today. So before we turn over to our witnesses, I would like to just take note that if anyone isn't prepared to speak today or could not otherwise join us this afternoon, written comments can be submitted until September 8th, 2020. Comments may be submitted by email to healthrate comments at dc.gov. Again, that's healthrate comments at dc.gov. To date, in addition to the residents scheduled to testify tonight, the department has received over 120 written comments, so we thank you in advance for submitting those comments. With that, that concludes my opening remarks, and I want to turn things over to Phil Barlow, who will go into more detail about the information about the filed rates. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And if you give me just a second to see if I can handle this technology. Okay. So everybody should be able to see the first page. It says 2021 QHP submissions. This is a summary document that identifies what the filings were submitted by the insurance companies. So to take an example, you can see that Aetna filed for PPO, small group plans. They filed eight plans. The original proposed increase was 38%. After the review, that was reduced to an 8.2% increase. The overall increase is not spread evenly across all plans, so if you can see the next column, that the range of plans was 6.9% to 12.5% increase, and there are 424 covered lives in that block of business. So you can see the rest of the numbers for the other plans, the numbers that in red are decreases, and the numbers that in black are increases. The next, so all of these, all of this information is available on our website at the same site where you found the link to this meeting tonight, so if you can look up this information there either now or after the hearing. The next page simply reiterates what the Commissioner said earlier. It identifies the number of plans, and as you can see from this chart, that there were, there was no change in individual plans from the two companies that offer individual plans in the district. That's CareFirst and Kaiser. On the small group side, there were 17 new plans and 10 plans that were terminated, so for a net increase of seven plans for 2021 on the small group side. The next page identifies some of the comparison of year-over-year rate changes for plans that existed in both 2020 and 2021. So this will give you an idea of, if you look at by type of company, by metal level, and by company, what the impact, what the change in the rates from what they actually sold last year to what is currently, the current rates that were, that are being presented here today. It will be discussed as we go forward. The next page looks at, the next page looks at the comparison of the rates from what was originally filed to the revised rates. So this tells you the impact of the rate review on the rates themselves. I'm going to have to give me a second because I think I've got to do a little bit of technical And the last two sheets, the first sheet is individual rates. It looks at sample rates for ages 27, 40, and 55. That's the low rate, the high rate, and an average rate for the plans that are offered by company. So the first one is for individual plans, and then the second one is for shop plans. So that gives you some information to help you understand how rates compare to last year, how the rates are, what happened during the rate review process, and you can get an idea of what kind of rates you can expect to see this year from looking at the last two that looked at sample rates. And with that, I will turn it back over to the Commissioner.
Great. Thank you, Phil, for sharing that information, and I don't have any questions about that, but thank you for sharing that information. We will move forward with our carrier presentations, and we have, as I mentioned, four of the carriers here that will be presenting, and we will start with Sheila Schrader, who is the Executive Director of Actuarial Services with Kaiser Foundation Health Plan of the Mid-Atlantic States. So Sheila, welcome.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Thank you.
I am going to try to share my screen very quickly. If it doesn't work, Phil is prepared to show my slide. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Oh, great. I didn't think it was going to work. Okay. Well, good afternoon. I want to start by thanking you for the opportunity to speak today on behalf of Kaiser. As already mentioned, my name is Sheila Schrader, and I am the Executive Director and Regional Chief Actuary for Kaiser's Mid-Atlantic Region. All right. I'm going to jump right in. For 2021, Kaiser filed an average decrease of 2% in the individual market and an average rate hold in the small group market. For individual, rate changes by plan range from a 13.3% decrease up to a 0.4% increase. For small group, the range is a decrease of 14.7% up to an increase of 2%. The variation in rate increases by plan are driven by plan design changes. So overall, the primary drivers of the average rate changes are shown in the table. For both individual and small group, a decrease is expected for medical expense that results in a 1.6% reduction on the rate. For individual, this is partially offset by a 0.8% increase due to expected risk adjustment transfers, but for small group, risk adjustment transfers are expected to be slightly reduced. The all-other category is mostly made up of admin expenses, broker commissions, state and federal taxes, and changes in margin. For individual, this is a further reduction of 1.2% and an increase of 1.7% for small group. We have not included any increase related to COVID for 2021. So Page 3 shows a view of market share by carrier for each pool. Kaiser's market share, which is shown in the green bars, has been stable over the last few years, and we expect this to continue going forward. This slide is comparing the original filed increases by company. These are not the revised increases that Phil just showed, so I apologize for that. The Kaiser's requested average rate increases are very competitive in both pools. We are the lowest in individual and have the second lowest rate change in small group. So Page 5 compares the lowest price plan for each company in each metal tier for a 40-year-old, and for the catastrophic tier, the rate shown is for a 27-year-old. So Kaiser's filed, initial filed rates represented by the green bars are the lowest in four of the five tiers. And this last slide shows the comparative results for small group, and it is a similar story. Again, in green, has the lowest rates in three of the four tiers. So based on our rate position relative to other carriers and the size of our rate changes for both small group and individual, we feel our requested rates are more than reasonable relative to the benefits we provide. Kaiser does remain committed to affordability and improving the health of the members we serve in the district, and we respectfully request that our rates be approved as currently filed. And that is the end of my prepared summary. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila, for your summary. It was very clear and concise, and I appreciate that. I do have one question that I'd like to ask, just given the state of affairs right now related to COVID-19. I'm just curious to know how has COVID-19 impacted the 2021 proposed rates that you've just shared?
So for Kaiser, because we're an integrated healthcare provider, we're not just an insurance company. We actually provide care, people, all of that. So for 2020, COVID, actually, we didn't see a reduction in claims due to COVID because we were still caring for people and incurring those expenses. And that's a different kind of dynamic than the regular insurance companies. Going into 2021, our assumption is that either office visits will be back to normal and people were going about normal utilization, or virtual visits will replace in-person visits. So we have not increased rates next year due to COVID, or assuming no impact.
Excellent. Thank you for answering that question. Phil, do you have any question?
No, Commissioner. I'm good.
Okay, great. Thank you, Sheila, for your presentation. I don't have any further questions at this time.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Great. So next, we will have Peter Berry, who is the Senior Vice President and Chief Actuary with CareFirst.
Thank you, Commissioner. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Good. As Commissioner said, my name's Pete Berry. I'm Chief Actuary for CareFirst. CareFirst offers HMO and PPO plans in the district for both individual and small group under two entities, Blue Choice and GHMSI, and I'll be addressing those average increases today. I'm also going to touch on a little bit about the catastrophic plan that saw the very large increase and talk to that, and then spend a few minutes discussing COVID and the impact we think that will have on 21. So diving right into the increases we have for individual, very modest increases for 2021 for our HMO, Blue Choice, we see an average increase of 2.5%. And for the PPO for individual, we see an average increase of 1%. Then in small group, our average increase for HMO is 0.2%, and then we see a 5.6% decrease for the PPO small group rates. The drivers of those rate changes, the base period claims, that is the change in the claims from '18 to '19, they increased about 4% to 5% for both entities, but then what we saw was the removal of the health insurance tax brings that back down, as well as we moderated our trend in our rate development, which brings it back down as well to those low single-digit. And then the driver of the minus 5.6 for small group PPO is that we expect to get an increase in the transfer for the federal risk adjustment program, an additional 4% from what we got in '20, and that's depressing those rates down to that minus 5. So those are the average increases for the entities. For the catastrophic plan, that was the one that Philip showed where we had, there was a 20% increase, which is very high. And the driver of that, this is the catastrophic plan is a very lean plan that's offered to members that are 30 years or younger. And the driver of that really is the base period experience. We saw the We saw the per member per month cost for that plan go from 2018, go from $98 to $125 in 2019. And that is the starting point for our rate development for 2021. So it really is that experience that is driving that rate increase that high. Finally, let me say a few things about COVID. We have not put an explicit adjustment into our rates to reflect what we think the impact of COVID will be for 21. However, that does not mean that we did not consider it. There's a lot of factors to consider that both could lower the rates or increase the rates. For 2020, we did see, like many carriers nationwide, we did see deferred care where people stopped going to the doctor back in March and April, and that caused our care to drop by as much as 40% in April. That's now come back up to about what it was pre-COVID in July. The issue is, will that deferred care come back into the market in 2020 or will it bleed over to 2021, which would cause the 2021 costs to rise? Counter to that would be the open enrollment periods we have and whether we think that because we're in a pandemic and we have an open enrollment period, we think people who are younger or healthier on average might come into the market, and we're tracking that as well. One of the big unknowns is if a vaccine is developed and what the cost of that vaccine would be in 2021. We we do see that as a material risk to our rates as we have not loaded our rates for that. But you can imagine if a widespread vaccine is implemented, that could be substantial cost. And then the last thing that we had to consider was if we see a second wave later this year or early next year, and we start seeing a lot of inpatient utilization again. So things we're watching, but like I said, at this point, given there was things that made it higher and lower, we did not make any explicit adjustments. So that ends my prepared remarks. I'd be happy to take any questions, Commissioner. You might be muted. I can't, I can't hear you.
Yes, I am muted. I said, thank you for for your presentation. I I do have a question, and I'm just curious to know a little bit more about why or your thinking behind not incorporating the the necessary adjustments in the rates for for 2021 in light of of COVID. If you could expand upon that a little bit more.
Yeah, if you think about it, if, you know, one month of care carrying over is worth 8%, so one week carried over is 2%, it's just, there's so much variation that could drive them down if we if we get a healthier population the rest of the year or could substantially increase them that it almost at this point, the distribution is so wide that any adjustment would be arbitrary. I think what we what we would want to do is track it. And if we do see a substantial variation going into 2021, I think all the carriers should come back together with the DISB and talk about that and see if we think any adjustments are appropriate at that time. Now, on the other side, if if the risk comes in substantially lower, the federal government has the minimum loss ratio mechanism in place to return money to the members in cases where experience comes in dramatically better.
Great, and thank you for providing that explanation. That is helpful. Phil, do you have any questions or anything to add to that?
Sure, thanks. Pete, I just wanted to see if I can understand if CareFirst has taken any actions. You mentioned that that the care services provided dropped in April, at least a little bit, to understand if if CareFirst made any adjustments as a result of that. And and sort of secondarily, if, given the, you know, sort of the nature of the current activity in the around the coronavirus, if CareFirst has considered that in any way in developing their rates.
Yeah, so we did take some actions where we could on premium credits back to members in August to reflect the lower liabilities earlier in the year, as well as we increased our grace periods for for our groups from 30 to 60 days in order to be able to help them manage their cash flow during this time. So those are some of the actions we've we've taken in reaction. Again, with regards to the rate development for 2021, we've, we're looking at it very closely. We are tracking it very closely. But at this point, for small group and individual, in all our jurisdictions, we did not make any explicit adjustments.
Thanks. That's it.
Sure. Great, thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Peter. So next we will have Ryan Morgan, who is the Actuarial Director for United Healthcare Group.
Yep, I'm here. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can hear you.
Terrific, yeah. Good evening, thank you, Commissioner Woods and the DC Department of Insurance and Securities and Banking for the opportunity to present today. My name is Ryan Morgan. I'm an actuary with United Healthcare, and I'm here tonight to discuss the 2021 small group rates that United Healthcare has filed with the department for our three legal entities. So way back on May 1st, we submitted our rate filings that included increases of 11.4% for United Healthcare Insurance Company, 10.3% on Optimum Choice, and 17.4% on United Healthcare of the Mid-Atlantic. The primary drivers of these increases was our trend rate, which represents the increase in medical and pharmacy cost and utilization from year to year. So United Healthcare conducted a detailed review of all the components that contribute to our trend, breaking them down by service category, looking in in a lot of detail. Our overall finding was our medical trend rate was similar to last year, but our prescription drug trend rate was higher than last year. So because of this, our overall trend rate came in at 9%, which was greater than the 8.3% trend we filed last year. And then also note that our filings did not include an adjustment for additional claims related to COVID-19, either in our trend assumption or anywhere else in the filing. So over the past four months, as as others have alluded to, there was an extremely thorough review of all aspects of our rate filing. So at the end of the process, we worked with DISB and agreed to reduce our rates by 3%, or reduce our rate increases by 3% for all three legal entities. So that, as you saw in the exhibit that Philip showed earlier, our final increases stand at 8.4% for United Healthcare Insurance Company, 7.3% on Optimum Choice, and 14.4% on United Healthcare of the Mid-Atlantic. So hopefully, this brief summary of United Healthcare's small group rate filings has been helpful. And yeah, thanks for your time and attention and for hosting this hearing. And I'd be happy to take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ryan, for your your testimony. I I do have a couple of questions. Similar to the question that I asked Peter, just curious to know a little bit more about why you did not include an adjustment related to to due to COVID-19.
Yeah, I think the United's experience has been very similar to a lot of the points Mr. Berry raised. I think, yeah, he actually said that very articulately. It's especially if you think back to May 1st when we filed and things were even more uncertain probably than they are now. There's just so many factors. Will there be a vaccine? How will that be paid for? How much testing will be done? There's deferred care, but when will that come back? We're shifting, we're seeing more telehealth, but will that stay that way or will that, some of that go back? So I think it was just so much uncertainty, different factors in different directions. So we kind of just came to the conclusion, we couldn't really, we didn't have the information to justify an increase at that time. So we thought putting zero was was the right way to go.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. And and just to just stay on that point a little bit more, has United considered any premium relief for policyholders during 2020 or in the pricing of 2021 premiums?
Yeah, we did. I'm I'm pretty sure it was a 10% premium reduction back in May. So for our groups, their May premium, 10% of that was refunded. So yeah, we did, we did execute a program like that.
Okay. Good to know. Okay, I I don't have any additional questions for United, Phil, unless you do.
Okay, yeah, I just have a quick question. Ryan, United is, of course, a national carrier that has probably business in all 50 states and the territories, most of the territories. So can you tell us, to the extent that you know, how the how the experience and the rates in the district compare to other places? Is it, are you seeing the same kind of issues other places as in the district? Or is there something unique about our market?
Yeah, I think from, because, yeah, I guess I know best other, other, I guess, northeast region states. And yeah, I think we've seen similar increases in those places as well. So yeah, I don't think there's anything, yeah, specific to DC that it's exceptionally high or low compared to other geographies.
Okay, thanks.
Yep, thank you.
Great, thank you, Ryan. I don't have any additional questions for you at this time. Great. So we are going to move on to our our last carrier presentation, and we have Regis Marai with the, who is the Director of Commercial Actuarial for Aetna. Welcome, Regis.
Hello, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can hear you.
Great. So hello, everyone. My name is Regis Marai. I am the Commercial Director for Aetna for the Capital Market, DC, Maryland, and Virginia states. And today I will talk through our submission for our small group ACA filings. So today, Aetna files rates in our small group market for two legal entities. Our HMO entity is Aetna Health, Inc., and our PPO entity is Aetna Life Insurance Company. For our HMO entity, our average rate decrease is 3.3%, and we have filed eight plans. For our PPO entity, our average rate increase is 8.2%, and we have also filed eight plans as well. I'll note that these changes are average rate changes. The exact rate change that a consumer will see will depend on the benefit plans that the individual chooses, when the member's group contract renewes, the age and family size of enrolling employees, and employer contributions. To develop these rates, we have taken historical claims experience from 2019 and projected it forward to 2021. There are four main drivers for our rate changes. First, medical costs go up. Second, plan designs change. Third, our estimate of the average morbidity in the small group risk pool has changed. And then finally, and other items which include experience coming in differently than we would have expected. So I'll go into a little more detail about these four items. So first, medical costs go up. We expect medical costs to go up. Medical costs go up mainly for two reasons. First, providers raise their prices, and second, members get more medical care. For small employers in the District of Columbia, some examples of increasing medical costs we have experienced in the last 12 months include the cost of an inpatient hospital admission has increased, the cost for pharmacy prescriptions has gone up, and use of physician services have increased. Second, plan designs change. Changes to our cost sharing for some plans were made to comply with actuarial value requirements and/or make plans more attractive to consumers. Our estimate of the average morbidity in the small group risk pool has also changed. Our estimate of the average population health and expected risk adjustment transfers for Affordable Care Act products have changed to reflect new data on market average premiums and population health. Small groups purchasing insurance in the marketplace are sicker than we had initially anticipated. Fourth is the other items bucket. So a bucket of other items contribute a decrease to our rates, including claims experience emerging differently than we would have originally anticipated. We also want to update you on what Aetna is doing to keep premiums affordable. We're taking a number of steps to keep our products as affordable as possible and to address the underlying cost of healthcare. These actions include developing new agreements, arrangements, and partnerships with healthcare providers that base provider compensation on the quality of care and not the quantity of services. We are creating medical management programs that address potential health issues for members earlier, improving health outcomes, and reducing the need for high-cost healthcare services. And then finally, we're working to reduce the ability of out-of-network providers to collect unreasonably excessive payments for services they provide. Aetna is dedicated to increasing transparency within the healthcare system and helping members best utilize the plans that they have. Members can access Aetna Navigator, a secure member website, which allows them to research their specific plan benefits, healthcare providers in a given area, and in some locations, the cost of certain healthcare services. Additionally, Aetna's DocSign directory helps members locate in-network doctors and hospitals to save money on their care. Yet, the Navigator streamlined mobile app is also available to allow members to take care on the go. Thank you for the opportunity to present our rate development process.
Great, thank you, Regis, for your presentation. That was helpful. Just a couple of questions. Can you expand a little bit more on, you referenced the medical costs have gone up. I would imagine some of that has contributed to to COVID. Can you expand upon that a little bit more in terms of of what you all have experienced as a result of the medical costs going up?
So in general, from year to year, we see medical costs increase. Generally, we capture this through trend. So we expect medical costs to go up by 10.2%. And again, that's driven mostly by the contracts that we have with with providers, so the the rates that we pay for medical care, but as well as the utilization of services. In 2020, due to COVID, we have seen a reduction in medical costs in the beginning of the year, as many members avoided going to the hospital or put off elective surgeries or elective care that they felt they didn't need to go into the hospital for. We have since seen that the pattern of care returned back to pre-COVID levels. So as of June and July, we're seeing the utilization of services more in line with what we saw at the beginning of the year before the COVID environment. As we project moving forward through the rest of 2020 and into 2021, we do expect to see elevated care relative to the past couple of months as as utilization returns back to normal in in hospital settings as we have increased costs for testing, a possible vaccine. So we don't, you know, we do, we do expect the cost pressure, upward pressure going forward into 2021.
Great, thank you for that respond, that response. And similar to the the question that I asked from the previous carrier, can you talk a little bit more about how Aetna has considered any premium relief for for policyholders during 2020 or in the pricing of 2021 premiums?
Yep. So for 2021 premiums, we have not included any explicit adjustment for COVID. We modeled a number of scenarios of what we thought the impact on costs would be in 2021, but ultimately found that the range, the range of outcomes in those scenarios were far too wide to take a point estimate to include in our filing. So at the time of submitting the filing, you know, back when, it was, it was much earlier in COVID, so there was even more uncertainty. But we continue to to believe that there's uncertainty at this time, and so we have not included any any rate changes, increases, or decreases for COVID. We do anticipate, well, we will continue to monitor the healthcare environment as we move through the rest of 2020 and into the beginning of 2021. And if the, if 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 things are changing significantly enough that they would warrant a refile, we would consider refiling our rates at that time. In terms of forgiveness or things that we're doing in 2020, unfortunately, for our ACA plans, we have not provided any premium credits. We have a very small block, a couple hundred members. However, outside of our ACA plans, we have, we've extended the the period of time to collect premiums, so we've provided some forgiveness there. We've also considered mitigating increases for premium rates into 2021 to capture the favorable claim experience that we've seen in 2020, and are issuing premium credits and premium, you know, premium credits with our renewals as a way to provide a more favorable as a way to provide a more favorable premium for customers.
Great, thank you for that response. I don't have any additional questions right now. But, okay, and I don't think Phil has any either. So thank you again, Regis. And I don't, as I mentioned, have anything else, any additional questions. So so thank you for your presentation.
All right, thank you.
Great, we're gonna move on on our agenda to our next presenter. And we have Dave Dillon, who is the Senior Vice President and Principal for Lewis and Ellis. And he is going to provide a testimony. Welcome, Dave.
Thank you, Commissioner. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, great. Well, you know, thanks for inviting me once again to this rate hearing. I don't know if the public is aware that, you know, the district is only one of a handful of jurisdiction that, you know, jurisdictions that gives the public, you know, this type of opportunity. So it's good to be here to try to kind of, you know, explain a little bit of the actuarial review. You know, because a lot of time, you know, the actuarial review can be very technical. So I will try to be as simplistic as I can. But, you know, LNE has been engaged by the department since 2016. We've reviewed over 60 health insurance rate reviews for the department and, you know, and making sure that the insurers are providing, you know, fair and reasonable rates to the consumers of the district. My LNE staff has assisted over 22 states with ACA reviews, and that's that accounts for about 1,000 filings. So the actuaries that we have, you know, put on the filings for the department have a lot of experience and expertise in this area. I should, you know, kind of start by saying DC is a little bit different than some of the other, you know, states that we review rates. You know, a small example is DC has a different requirement on how rates change by age. So as someone ages, you know, rates just change just based on the age change. That is a little different in DC. A much bigger difference in DC is DC has what we call a semi-merged market. There are only a couple other states that have some kind of a merged market. In a merged market, an insurer must combine the claims from the small group and individual markets together in determining the rates. You know, this merging of claims is designed to kind of help stabilize, you know, like a smaller individual market, which does have higher volatility. What makes DC a little bit different than a fully merged market like Vermont or Massachusetts is that DC's risk adjustment program or, you know, their application of the federal program, which reallocates dollars between insurers based on kind of how healthy and sick they are, that is not merged, even though the claims are combined. So that makes DC a little bit different. So, you know, we take those those kind of issues into consideration when we do a review. But, you know, really, the basis of our review is really just making sure that the filings are in compliance with the district's laws and regulations, you know, federal law and regulations. You know, there's a lot of them for the ACA. And then we also make sure that they comply with actuarial standards of practice. Those are kind of our overriding, you know, guiding principles that the filings must comply with as well. So, you know, Commissioner, you mentioned earlier, you know, kind of actuarial standards of practice. You know, there's kind of three main terms that are defined in the ASOPS. And that is, you know, excessive inadequacy and unfairly discriminatory. So those are the three main criteria as kind of we review all of the underlying factors in a filing. You know, so as we kind of jumped in and we look at the 2021 filing and, you know, we we kind of go in thinking about what are some of the factors? You know, why would the rates be different from 2020 and 2019, you know, and how they move through time? You know, the simplest one is the underlying growth in healthcare costs. You know, just the claims cost trend, you know, kind of that inflationary piece, you know, which is a combination of how many services are being used by consumers and the cost of, you know, kind of the unit cost of those services. We, you know, we assess, as mentioned a little bit earlier, but we assess, you know, kind of the changes in the risk pool composition, how people have come in and out of the market. You know, they somebody may, you know, joined one carrier and they were the prior carrier before. So that will change the rates for the carriers. We look at the administrative charges. We look at the risk margin contribution to reserve, things like that. Obviously, for this year, COVID, you know, is a major factor in 2020. And, you know, so we had to review to see, you know, kind of assess, is it appropriate? It's touched on by the carriers. There were no adjustments made for COVID this year for the 2021 rates. And and we had to review was that appropriate or not? Yeah, it's great that they didn't bump rates up, but we did review that, you know, there's a lot of potential impacts from COVID. You know, there's deferred costs that could, you know, move from 2020 to 2021. There could be some increased costs due to delayed care because someone's condition has worsened. You know, there's the actual cost from someone, you know, getting COVID. There's the vaccination cost and things like that. So we reviewed kind of the DC market to get an estimate of what could happen. Obviously, it's very uncertain. But so we wanted to make sure that no adjustment, you know, was reasonable. There was also a reduction in federal fees this year. So we wanted to confirm that, you know, the carriers complied with that and reduced the rates for that. So kind of, you know, after focusing on those issues, you know, we assessed all the, you know, the filings by the four carriers. So I'll just quickly mention kind of our findings by each carrier. Basically, for the CareFirst entities and their in their filings, we made a recommendation that the contribution to reserves or the profit margin be reduced. That did vary by company. We also made a recommendation to to kind of tweak the relationship between the HMO and the PPO product rates. There is kind of a weird inconsistency that is created because of the semi-merged market. And so we made a recommendation as a result of that. So as stated earlier, there was a reduction in premiums for three of the filings, a slight increase on one. And to date, CareFirst has agreed to make those changes. Regarding the United filings, there are three entities, three filings. There was there was a minor user fee issue that we recommend needs to be updated. And we made a recommendation on their trend assumption. While United may not specifically agree with each of the specific recommendations, they have agreed to drop the rates by 3% to account for the aggregate impact of those issues. For Aetna, two filings, and they had similar issues on both filings. And I won't necessarily go into to the exact numbers. You know, Philip provided those earlier. But there were some issues around the risk adjustment projections. We recommend modification to how that was developed. We made a recommendation about the trend assumption. Again, another issue on the risk adjustment kind of user fee. And we made a recommendation regarding kind of the morbidity assumption or an assessment of how sick their population was. So again, similar to United, Aetna did not necessarily agree with each of the kind of specific points that we made. But they did agree to make the overall reductions that we recommended. And then for Kaiser, you know, Kaiser's a little bit different in that we actually assess that the rates do appear inadequate based on typical actuarial standards of practice. That is, that has happened in the past. And so when we make our recommendation to you, we just we have to highlight that to you that we do think the rates are inadequate. So therefore, we don't make any other recommendations, you know, modifications or concessions on those rates. But we do highlight that, you know, financial solvency is a, you know, major consideration for the department, you know, to make sure that consumers do have the insurance protection. So we just make that note that you might just, you know, keep half an eye on that because of that. But that was it for Kaiser. So that is all of my prepared remarks.
Thank you, Dave. That was very helpful. And I I think there are many who are listening that can appreciate your analysis of how you all arrived at the actual actuarial review process. I do have a few questions that I'd like to just pose to you. So you there's there's some obvious factors that are involved right now in light of COVID. And so I'm curious to know a little bit more about how you and your team are keeping up with a lot of the changes that are happening right now as it relates to overall healthcare reform.
Yeah, sure. Yeah. So obviously, the COVID kind of changes daily, right? So we try to keep up on it as best we can. My staff is very active with the Society of Actuaries and what the Society of Actuaries is doing regarding COVID and other health insurance related issues. I was on what they call the Project Oversight Group for the Society of Actuaries 2021 Healthcare Model, which was specifically designed to model expected costs as a result from COVID. So we were involved with that. I currently serve on the SOA's Board of Directors. Another staff member, Jackie Lee, is the Chair of the SOA's Health Section. So we are very active with the Society of Actuaries and and the ongoing, you know, developments as they update their model and things like that regarding COVID and other healthcare reform issues.
Great, thank you for that response. Just staying on COVID. Can you describe how insurers have approached the pandemic in their filings? We've heard from some of them today as they are thinking about it. But can you expand on that a little bit more in terms of how the insurers have approached the pandemic in their filings? And also how that has compared to other jurisdictions?
Yeah, it was interesting. In DC, I think it's safe to say of the nine states, nine jurisdictions that I've reviewed this year, I think you guys are the only one where every carrier did not make an adjustment for COVID.
Interesting.
So that was a little bit different. In every other state, carriers did make some adjustments. And generally speaking, those adjustments were in the 0% to 3% increase. We did see a couple insurers file for above 3%. That was mainly limited to one parent company that had some affiliates in multiple jurisdictions. And they ultimately, over the review period, and they got updated data, they actually, they did reduce it to the lower than 3%. I think we saw one carrier submit a negative adjustment as a result from COVID. Interesting thing there is, while not final yet, in that state, it appears, actually, I guess it was one carrier in two different states. But the states, it looks like, are going to make them bump that up to zero, primarily because the state and with our help, you know, reviewed what the COVID, kind of what the impact was in those states, and a negative impact didn't look applicable. And so that kind of goes to what, as I said, you know, we did review kind of what has happened in the district just to make sure that, you know, no adjustment is necessary. I think it is fair to say that most actuaries probably think there is a slightly positive impact that could hit the district. So when the carriers don't make an adjustment, they are taking the risk. You know, they can't, you know, the ACA rates can't modify. So in the individual market, small group, they can modify quarterly. So in the small group carriers, they could tweak it if the experience is a little bit worse. So, yeah, the district did have a little bit different submission on the COVID assumption.
Great, thank you for that. Can you expand a little bit more around how the file trends in the district compare to to other jurisdictions?
Yeah, so I touched on, you know, trend is kind of the, you know, you're going to get it every year impact. So it's the one, you know, it's kind of the key driver every year. And it typically runs 2.5% to 7.5% a year. Sometimes it's a little more. We have seen a little bit more in the district recently. That can vary dramatically by carrier. Kaiser mentioned earlier that they kind of have a different model than other carriers. And so their trend is a little bit lower. There tends to be more on the 2.5% side because of that, you know, they work with the providers and, you know, own the providers. So, you know, the district, it was a little bit higher for some of them. And as I mentioned earlier, some of our recommendations were to reduce the trend. And the carriers did ultimately agree. While they may not have necessarily agreed with that specific recommendation, they did ultimately, you know, make the overall rate reduction.
Great, thank you for that response. I want to expand a little bit more on something you referenced during your testimony around the semi-merged market. And I heard another carrier also referencing it as well. But if you could provide a little more detail on what the impact of this program is on DC consumers and also insurers?
Yeah, so the semi-merge market, you know, it really gets at kind of the risk adjustment program that the federal government put in. It is probably one of the nastiest actuarial formulas out there, so I am not going to get into the details. I would bore everyone to death if I did. But but simplistically, when the ACA was passed, basically insurers couldn't charge people different rates, roughly speaking, right, depending on how healthy or sick they were. So I'll just speak simplistically. They'd have to charge two different people 100 bucks apiece, even if one was really sick and one was really healthy. So what the risk adjustment program was designed to do was kind of to protect insurers that maybe, I'll just say unlucky, and they got all of the sick people. So they were only they were only able to charge $100 per person, but they got all of the sick people, and they didn't have enough money to pay for those claims. Conversely, the healthy insurer, let's say they get they charge 100 bucks, but they get all the healthy people. No one goes to the doctor. Well, they don't get to keep all of that money, right, and under the ACA. So the risk adjustments away, it's a complex formula to kind of reallocate those dollars. So it is interesting that DC does not merge those. So what it it does cause a few interesting results. I kind of touched on one earlier with CareFirst with kind of the HMO and PPO products. One of those products is healthier, one is sicker. And so because the the risk adjustments not merge, it kind of has some interesting premium relationships. And so the other wrinkle to this is not every carrier participates in both the individual and small group markets. You know, there's two, CareFirst and Kaiser, that are in both. So they they have merged claims without the merged risk adjustment. And then you have Aetna and United that are just in the small group market. And so they don't have to deal with this issue. So it does, you know, create some differences for CareFirst and Kaiser that Aetna and United don't have to deal with. So, you know, proponents, you know, say that it does help stabilize, you know, the markets. And, you know, the small group market is the largest market between the two in DC. And so this approach does kind of help keep those smaller group rates down. But again, DC is the only jurisdiction that does this. Aetna, I mean, Massachusetts, I'm sorry, and Vermont do merge both, and that would tweak the individual rates down a little bit if that were to be done. But the small group rates would have to go up to compensate.
Great, thank you for that. I do have one last question. And then I'll kick it over to Phil to see if he has any questions for you. But after your presentation, we'll be hearing from Mila Kaufman with the Health Benefit Exchange. And we'll hear a little bit more about their thinking about the overall rate review process. But I'm curious to know, with some of LNE's recommendations, they're they're different from some of the recommendations that will be made by the Health Benefit actuaries. And so I'm curious to know if you've reviewed those recommendations and if you believe there's any differences between the recommendations that are material.
Yeah, so, yeah, I've said this a few times, DC is a little bit different in DC. And this is another issue where DC is different than it. It has two sets of actuaries kind of reviewing. You know, I review it for the department. Oliver Wyman does it for the exchange. So there's a lot of actuarial eyes on it. So we do not, and they are independent reviews. But we do communicate with Oliver Wyman throughout the process just to make sure that, you know, we don't, you know, duplicate some of the work and, you know, ask the same questions that the other party is asking. But, you know, actuarial work is not an exact science. So we do kind of typically, you know, work in ranges, you know. So a- as a reviewing actuary, I, you know, we, we aren't prescriptive for the carriers and saying you have to do it a certain way. But we do need to make sure that the answer is within a range. And so anytime that a range is reasonable, you know, Oliver Wyman's answer might be a little bit to one end of the range and ours could be to the other end, but we would still consider it reasonable. So after reviewing, you know, what Oliver Wyman has presented, I don't believe there's anything material, materially different. They do have a little bit different assessment. But they also have a different charge. You know, they're, they work with the exchange, we work with you. They don't, they do not comment on contribution to reserves that we do have to comment on. So there, there's a lot of similiar similarities, but there are some differences. And, and all in all, we didn't think there were any material differences.
Great. And, and thank you for that. I think that's an important factor to, to keep in mind. So with that, I don't have any additional questions. And thank you again for the work that you're doing. And I don't, Phil, do you have? No. Okay. So Phil doesn't have any additional questions either. So with that, we're going to move on. Thank you. Welcome. We're going to move things along on our agenda. And next we have Mila Kaufman, the Executive Director of the DC Health Benefit Exchange Authority. So with that, welcome, Mila. And I don't see her yet on the screen.
Oh. Can you hear me, Commissioner?
I can hear you loud and clearly.
Okay. My camera is on, so hopefully you'll see me at some point in time.
Yes, there you are.
Good afternoon. I'm just going to go ahead and share my PowerPoints.
And I'll mute my, my line here.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you so much, Commissioner Woods. And I'll just go right into my presentation. We very much appreciate and value your support of the Health Benefit Exchange Authority and appreciate your contributions as a board member and your consideration of our recommendations. And just to be mindful of time, I'm not going to go through all of the details in my slides. I will just provide you with some highlights. So as a way of background, DC Health Link is a public-private partnership. It's our online health insurance marketplace for residents and small businesses in the District of Columbia. And as you mentioned, Commissioner, in your opening remarks, we in DC have nearly a 97% insured rate, meaning almost all of our residents have coverage. And since we've opened for business, we've helped to cut the uninsured rate in half. DC was the last state to start building our IT system. However, we were, we were one of four state-based marketplaces that opened for business on time and stayed open on October 1st, 2013. We cover about 100,000 people. That's 80,000 covered through our small group marketplace. And that includes more than 5,100 district small businesses and nonprofits. That also includes about 11,000 people covered through either being a member of Congress or being a designated staff person working in a district office or on the Hill. And we cover about 17,000 residents on the individual side. We work with more than 800 brokers. We've been recognized by many entities, including just last year, we won the Sustainability and Equity Award from Amazon Web Services City on the Cloud International Competition. We also rank number one for consumer decision support tools among all state-based marketplaces and the Federal Exchange. And back in 2017, the Massachusetts Health Connector chose us to replace their old IT system for their online health insurance marketplace for their small businesses. We also operated for them. When you consider proposed rates and when we look at the rate history, it's really important to recognize some of the very significant actions that DC policymakers and others have taken to avoid premium increases that would have been caused by many federal actions. And so I'll just highlight a few of those for you. The federal administration decided to exempt association health plans and also decided to expand short-term limited duration plans, otherwise known as junk insurance. The estimated impact of that would have been a premium increase of more than a thousand dollars per year per person for our residents and small businesses. We avoided that. Policymakers here passed a law to mitigate the negative impact of the federal actions. When the federal government zeroed out the individual responsibility requirements, that was estimated to, to increase premiums by about 10% around the country. DC policymakers passed a law again to avoid that negative impact. The federal government also decided to shorten their open enrollment period to six weeks and cut their marketing and outreach budget by 90%. We acted and we established a 90-day open enrollment period and we increased our outreach and communications effort. And those two things are very important because that's a one way we make sure that young people enroll as well as people who are healthy. It's very important to maintain a good, a risk mix in our pool. And those, and those two areas contribute to that and prevent premiums for further increasing. I just wanted to give you a quick update on our COVID-19-related activities. We, from day one, have been looking for ways and have adopted policies to help residents and businesses to get insured and stay insured. In fact, all residents can enroll online on DC Health Link, to get private health insurance through September 15th. It's just as easy as during open enrollment. And we've also made coverage effective dates start early. So for example, if a person enrolled at the end of August, their coverage began September 1st instead of October 1st, which is usually what happens during open enrollment. So we've made it very easy and eliminated barriers to getting enrolled. And certainly for our small group marketplace as well, we adopted a COVID-19 qualifying event for employees and dependents who turned down their job-based coverage in the past. And that really has helped employers with workers who are in states that, that use the federal marketplace where there is no COVID-19 step. We also don't charge late fees or interest for late payment premiums. We've never done that and that policy continues. We adopted a 60-days deferment of premium policy. And that's, and that works with the public health emergency. So employers can defer their premiums up to 60 days from the date the public emergency ends. And we also immediately implemented your orders, Commissioner Woods, to essentially provide a one-year repayment plan for employers who owe back premiums. And we do not terminate coverage for employers that owe back premiums. Our role in rate review is to advocate for the lowest possible rates for our small businesses, our nonprofit customers, as well as individual customers. And as mentioned earlier, we do hire outside actuaries from Oliver Wyman to analyze the proposed rate filings, to identify unsupported assumptions as well as any mistakes that were made in the filings and to work with your actuaries on, on that information. So my slides, as you can see, reflect the original filed proposed rates that were filed in May. So I will be using this slide as well as referencing the slide that Deputy Commissioner Varlow made available to the public at the start of this hearing. On the individual side, Care First, HMO, average initial proposed rate is a 14.7%. And as they refiled, it looks like that's lowered, that's decreased to 2.5%. Now, we very much appreciate the refiled lower rate. But we are still very concerned with the fact that for some of the residents insured with Care First, HMO, even the, the 20.5% increase is, is going to result in some of those residents losing their coverage. The 25.5% I'm referencing is the top of the range that the, the health plan refiled. And that's for catastrophic coverage. We have about 800 people currently covered in that plan, mostly 20-some-year-olds. Over 20% increase for 20-some-year-olds means that many are likely not to be able to afford it, of course. But that catastrophic plan also covers people who have affordability exemptions, which means they couldn't afford bronze coverage. Catastrophic is their lifeline. So a 20% increase on that plan will have devastating effects, affordability effects, on people who currently have it. So our recommendation is to freeze premiums at the 2020 rates for products with proposed increases. The same is, holds for Care First PPO refiled rate. We support approving filed decreases. Although I'll note that our actuaries from Oliver Wyman believe that a decrease based on the evidence submitted should be even greater than what's proposed and should be an average of at least 1.4% decrease. So our recommendation is to approve decreases and freeze premiums at 2020 rates for products with proposed increases. For Kaiser, our recommendation is also the same, to approve decreases and freeze premiums at the 2020 rates for products with proposed increases. Now, turning to the small group marketplace filed premiums, premium changes. I'm very concerned that although there's a significant effort made to decrease premiums for certain products, I'm very concerned for the customers in products facing increased premiums. The impact of those increases will be devastating and will result in huge losses of coverage. And I'll get to the reasoning behind that in just a few minutes. So across the board for the small group marketplace, our recommendation is to approve decreases and to freeze premiums at the 2020 rates for products with proposed increases. And your actuary, your consulting actuary discussed the financial condition of companies being an important consideration. We did look at risk-based capital and all of these companies show a very strong financial condition, as this chart shows, based on the reporting for 2019. And so any kind of freeze on premiums is not likely to cause any material or significant change to a company's strong financial condition. So we face our recommendations to approve decreases and freeze premiums at the 2020 rates for products with proposed increases on the public policy around COVID-19 and its unprecedented economic and human toll. The negative economic impact of COVID-19 on district residents and employers is significant. In fact, our unemployment rate here in DC has more than doubled so far. Compared to a 5.5 unemployment rate in 19, for 20, it's 11.6. So more than one in every 10 residents is without a job.
Wow.
And the projection for 21 is the unemployment rate is going to go up. District employers shut down either temporarily or permanently. And it's been significant. Looking at unemployment claims, unemployment claims increased from about 28,000 in 2019 to 145,000 new claims that were filed between January 1 and August 18. And when we look at the revenue loss to the city, and that's just an indicator of how well or not well our residents and businesses are doing, looking at revenue to the city. The city estimates having a loss of revenue at $1.5 billion. So for FY '20, the city estimates losing $722 million in revenue. And it's projecting for FY '21 to lose another $774 million in revenue. And when we look at wages, for FY '19, we saw wage growth at 3.5%. For FY '20, wages decreased by 1.6%. And the projection for FY '21 in terms of wage growth is only 0.7%. When we look at our small businesses, now that includes businesses, for-profit businesses as well as nonprofits. When we look at our more than 5,100 employers covered through DC Health Link Small Group Marketplace, we have 841 currently behind in payments for August, as of August 2020. And pre-COVID, when we look at how many groups are typically behind in payments, it's usually between 50 and 70 groups. I don't have data on the individual side because our health plans bill policyholders directly. But I'm sure the health plans could provide you with that data as well to see how many people are struggling to afford their current premiums. Now, we are working with all the health plans to identify additional ways to provide relief to employers and workers. Unfortunately, recent federal actions made it much harder for the health plans to actually provide premium relief for individual residents. When we look at the impact of COVID on communities, black and brown communities, on communities, Black and Brown communities, those communities have been hit even harder. So when we look at deaths in DC, 74% of COVID-19 deaths in DC are Black and African-American residents, while Black and African-American residents are only 46% of our population. 13% of COVID-19 deaths in DC are Hispanic residents and are only 11% of the population. When we look at the economic impact nationally, we see that 40% of Black and African-American-owned businesses closed. That's almost half. When we look at Hispanic-owned businesses, 32%, that's a third, of Hispanic-owned businesses closed. 25% of women-owned businesses closed. And 17% of white-owned businesses closed because of COVID-19. It's been unprecedented, the economic and human toll. And people are struggling to afford food and rent. Many have lost their jobs. The $600 COVID-19 addition to unemployment insurance expired, and the US Senate has not acted yet. Many district residents are making huge sacrifices so they can keep their health insurance. And businesses are struggling. Despite the fact that businesses are struggling to stay afloat, they are still prioritizing having health insurance. Some even furloughed workers but kept their health plans. Whether it's a nonprofit that has seen its grants and donations decrease or a business that has had no work in labor for making sacrifices to stay insured. And the response by residents, businesses, policymakers, providers, and health plans, our entire community, to the unimaginable economic and human toll of COVID-19 shows that we really are all in this together. And so I just want to highlight the important actions that the health plans took. I know you asked each health plan about their actions, but I think it's really important to highlight some of the actions they took collectively and individually. And in a time of crisis, all health plans have acted in unprecedented ways to help. They removed financial barriers to care and made certain medical and mental health care free to people. They gave premium credits to employers and helped medical providers to keep providing care. So for example, all health plans waived financial obligations for diagnosis and testing for COVID-19, and they did that early before you issued emergency orders requiring health plans to do certain things. Health plans made telehealth services for free for a period of time. Kaiser has always made telehealth free for their members, and they will continue to do that. CareFirst and United Healthcare provided premium credits totaling more than $4.2 million in savings for our employers on DC HealthLink. And CareFirst accelerated over $170 million in provider payments, and United Healthcare nearly $2 billion nationwide to ensure that providers had some revenue to stay afloat to continue to provide medical care. And so I'm asking Aetna, CareFirst, Kaiser, and United to reconsider your proposed rates. Help DC employers and residents by decreasing premiums where possible. And we've already seen CareFirst and Kaiser do this for some of their products. And we ask that they continue, all carriers continue their 2020 premiums for '21 where it's not possible to decrease rates. So the ask is freeze your rates as part of your COVID-19 response. Your financials are solid. Your COVID-19 response has helped our DC community, businesses, and residents. You have shown that you will do above and beyond what's expected. And we appreciate your voluntary actions to date, investing hundreds of millions to help your members and the DC community to deal with COVID-19. And during COVID-19 public health and economic crisis, continue to help DC employers and residents by not raising health insurance rates for 2021. And I just want to say that Disby and Commissioner Woods, under your leadership, you've made DC a leader in protecting insurance consumers during this public health emergency. Commissioner Woods issued the most consumer-protective emergency orders in the country. And I'll just highlight a few things from your orders. You prohibited terminations of coverage due to non-payment of premium during the public emergency, and as a result, saved tens of thousands of district residents and businesses from losing their health insurance. You required that insurers give people at least one year to repay past-due premiums. You required insurers to cover treatment for COVID-19 at no financial cost sharing. And so the recommendation is, if insurance companies don't reconsider their filings and don't freeze their own rates, then we ask you to consider the unprecedented economic and human toll of COVID-19 and consider not allowing any premium increases for '21 because of that. The economic and human toll is projected to continue into 2021. So this is not the time to increase premiums as people and employers are barely hanging on to stay insured. So approve only the premium decreases and freeze premiums to 2020 levels for products with proposed increases. And freezing rates during public emergencies is not a new concept. In fact, insurance regulators freeze rates during disasters to protect insurance consumers. For example, Louisiana's insurance commissioner suspended premium increases during Katrina. Florida's insurance commissioner suspended premium increases on property and casualty insurance during hurricanes. So while similar to natural disasters, COVID-19 is much worse. And the economic and human toll of COVID-19 will continue in 2021. To date, there are more than 180,000 people who are dead because of COVID-19 and more than 6 million people infected in the United States alone. Deaths and infections are projected to grow until there's a vaccine, the population is vaccinated, or there is an effective treatment. DC's unemployment rate is estimated to increase to 11.8% in 2021. DC estimates higher loss of revenue than in 2020. Residents cannot afford premium increases when they have no or when they have no income or have seen a decrease in their income. Businesses cannot afford premium increases when they have no revenue or much lower revenues. The economy will bounce back. People will bounce back, but that will take time. If insurers don't voluntarily keep premiums at 2020 levels, we urge you, Commissioner Woods, to approve reductions in premiums. And where reductions are not possible, freeze premiums to keep current rates for 2021. Thank you, Commissioner Woods, for holding this hearing, for considering our recommendations, and for your leadership and work to protect insurance consumers. I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Absolutely. And thank you, Mila, for your thoughtful presentation and consideration for the recommendations that you have posed today. I do have a couple of questions, and I think that overall, you've provided some very stark data points around the impact of COVID-19 on our overall economy and the impact that it's having on our businesses and our overall population here in the district. Given your strong position on not increasing premiums in 2021 and freezing them at the 2020 rates, can you paint a picture around what the potential impact would be if for any reason any rates were increased, say, in 2021? And what that would look like for your consumer base?
Yeah, I have to assume that that's just not going to be sustainable for people who are barely hanging on. You know, I mentioned earlier that the $600 addition to unemployment insurance payment has expired, and the US House passed a bill to extend that. The Senate has not acted. Well, that makes a big difference in what people can afford. And people have been making huge sacrifices, even though they've lost their jobs, to get insured and to stay insured. And that's their lifeline. Any kind of increase, especially as we look at the projected economic situation for '21, will result in many residents and employers dropping their health insurance because they just cannot afford private coverage anymore.
Great, thank you for that response. I'm curious to know, so we've heard from our actuary who just presented, you know, our findings throughout this actuarial review process. And Dave spoke to the district semi-merge market. Can you address the district semi-merge market and requirements based upon age where there is an automatic increase that does happen in the overall rates as a result of the age of policyholders?
Yep, so I just want to make two separate points. So federal law and district law allows adjustments to premiums. So if you're older, you are charged a higher rate than a 20-some-year-old is charged. And that's both federal and DC law. So when we say freeze premiums at 2020 levels, we are not suggesting that the age factors not be applied. In other words, for instance, if you're single and you get married and your spouse is covered, we're not suggesting that that spouse is covered for free, that you continue to pay the same rate, just like with age. There are certain adjustments that are allowed by federal and DC law. And so I just wanted to make sure that was clear. In terms of your question about DC semi-merge market, last year, we did extensive analysis on what the rates would look like if that semi-merge market were to be fully merged like Vermont and Massachusetts have, the two states that Dave mentioned. And interestingly, our actuarial analysis showed that for most people, rates would go up substantially, and a few would see reductions. But the increases would far outweigh the reductions that a few would see. And so we strongly opposed a change in that last year, and we continue to oppose that because there would be lots of people who would experience further rate increases. And when I say people, I mean residents and small businesses. And the savings would not be near, anywhere near the rate increases that people would see. So we continue to oppose any change to our existing semi-risk adjustment market, merge market.
Great, I do not have any additional questions. I'll pass things over to Bill.
Sure, I just had a quick follow-up to your last answer. It's my understanding that the risk adjustment simply swaps money around within the insurers operating within the district. So it would seem that the increases and the decreases should offset each other and have a net zero impact on the rates that the aggregate population of the district is paying. It sounded like what you were saying is that's not the case. Did you, I know this is a very technical kind of thing, but if you have information to explain that, that would be helpful.
Sure, and just to level set a little bit. Last year, prior commissioner asked carriers to file two sets of rates. One using current methodology and one that would be using a fully-merged risk adjustment methodology, fully-merged market methodology. And in the filed rates, just looking at what the carriers did, it became apparent that changing the methodology as proposed in the rates would result in many employers and many individuals facing higher premiums than they otherwise would using the current methodology. So that's, when I talked about this, I was actually directly thinking about last year's multiple filings that Disby required of carriers that actually showed the negative impact and the little bit of the cost savings that would have resulted. I'm happy to provide more information about that from last year's findings, if you'd like. And I forgot to make a couple of points that were raised by some of the carriers. So if there's time for me to do that, I would love to do that.
Yes, we do have a little bit of time to touch on that.
Thank you, Commissioner. One of the big unknowns that several health plans raised is the unknown cost for a vaccine and how that could have a significant impact on rates. You know, back during H1N1, it was the federal taxpayers that paid for the vaccine. The only cost to the health plans was a $10 fee that they paid to providers to administer the vaccine. But the vaccine itself was made available for free, and it was paid for by federal taxpayers. So I just wanted to make sure that that information became part of your record. Obviously, that doesn't guarantee that a COVID-19 vaccine would be free, but it's safe to assume because of the public health issues surrounding COVID that the federal government would pay for the vaccine. The other points I wanted to make, also some raised by some of the health plans, is there are many uncertainties about pent-up demand and utilization going up. I would just remind everyone that there's been some litigation around two big issues, risk corridor payments and a cost-sharing reduction reimbursements from the federal government. In both of those cases, the health plans have been very successful in the courts, and we supported their effort. The federal government owes the health plans all around the nation a lot of money and failed to pay. And in the courts, the health plans won, and we applaud that. But what that means is eventually, some of that will come into the health plans' pockets on top of the solid condition that the health plans have. So although there may be some uncertainties about 2021, we know that, we know certain things are true. We know that the economy is going to continue to be very difficult because of COVID. We know that if COVID returns, as some doctors suggested would, combined with the flu this fall and into the winter and into the spring, this fall and into the winter and into the spring, we might have another wave of lockdown, stay-at-home orders where businesses have to close and people have to stay at home and many more people would lose their jobs as the CFO's estimates here project for next year. So that we know of certain things, COVID will continue, continue to be devastating. And we do know that there are pockets of revenue that may become available to help health plans if they're concerned about their revenues. But again, their financials are very solid, even if those sources from the federal government don't come through. They're in a very good position to continue to do the right thing and to help D.C. residents and small businesses stay insured.
Great, thank you, Mila, excuse me, for that input, much appreciated, and for your overall recommendations. I don't have any further questions at this time, and it doesn't appear as if Phil has any questions. But again, thank you for your ongoing participation and partnership over the years. We sincerely appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Woods.
Great, we're going to move on in our agenda as we have a very extensive list of public witnesses with us today, and we do want to get a chance to hear from all of them. And so I'm going to pass this portion of the agenda over to Phil to further facilitate.
Thank you, Commissioner. And so if you have the agenda, there is a public witness list on there, that's the order that we will go through, the public witnesses, that's the order in which people requested to speak. So the first person on the list, and just in case people don't have the list, I'll kind of list off the first three people and then kind of, so that people can know when they're expected. Again, we actually to limit your comments to three minutes so that, because we still have a long list of people to go. And I apologize for messing up anybody's name, but the first person on the list is Shauna Gunarotny.
Yes, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Great, I just turned on my camera, so hopefully that will show up soon. Thank you for providing this opportunity to offer testimony. My name is Shauna Gunarotny. We have been purchasing our health insurance on the exchange and have chosen a plan seven times. I'm here to speak about the summary of benefits and coverage, which we rely heavily on when evaluating which insurance option to select for our family coverage. As the cost of health insurance premiums has increased greatly over the years, we have paid close attention to what additional costs we would be expected to cover under various plans in terms of deductibles, copays, et cetera, in order to determine which plan would serve us well. This has not been an easy or straightforward evaluation, and sometimes we are surprised when we receive the explanation of benefits for a given service. For this current plan year, we changed plans and we feel particularly misled as to the sequence of copays and deductibles. The summary of benefits and coverage for the Care First HSA Gold $1,500 plan states, deductible, then X dollar copay. This is not how the claims have been processed. In practice, for a given service, a copay is charged first and then any remaining amount applies to the deductible, directly contradicting the order presented in the summary of benefits and coverage. Because of the copay being charged first, it takes longer to meet the deductible and we bear more costs. In addition to accurate factual text in the summary, the coverage examples included at the end of the summaries could help to shed light on the sequence of copays and deductibles. In the 2020 summaries, this is obscured because each example shows the deductible being met. If there was an example where the deductible was not met, the consumer would be able to see whether there are additional amounts that must be paid before the deductible is met. Another area of concern relates to meeting a deductible under individual versus family coverage. For family coverage, some plans say an individual can meet the individual deductible, while some plans say the family must meet the family deductible. There is a statement in the summaries that says either of these are possibilities and instructs consumers to refer to the contract for further details. Please note that I don't remember the contract being available at the time of enrollment. I've since learned that Care First had been providing a generic contract that lightly would not have had plan specifics. That aside, here again, the coverage examples could shed light on how the deductible is treated under family coverage. In the 2020 summaries, this is a lost opportunity because all the examples assume individual coverage. A set of examples based on family coverage could show the consumer whether the individual or family deductible must be met under family coverage. Similarly, the coverage examples could help consumers to understand out-of-pocket maximums under family coverage, that is, whether they are met on an individual or family basis. Both of these are possibilities and consumers are again instructed to refer to the contract for further details. Neither the sequence of copays and deductibles nor the treatment of the deductible or the out-of-pocket maximum under family coverage is a minor detail. They greatly affect additional costs consumers are expected to cover. They are determining factors when assessing which plan best serves your family, and clarity and ease of access to information are of utmost importance. Because we purchase our health insurance through the exchange, we lack coworkers or a human resources department to help us understand the plans and their nuances. We depend on the summary of benefits and coverage to provide accurate, clear information. It seems that currently there are wasted opportunities to provide more illuminating coverage examples that will better help consumers make important decisions regarding their health insurance. Thank you very much for this opportunity to testify.
Thank you, Shauna, for your comments. And of course, I messed this up already, so next up, we have Evelyn Rodriguez, and she will be followed by Karen Mack and Yvette Austin. So Evelyn?
Yes, thank you so much. My name is Evelyn Rodriguez, and I am the Managing Director of a One Page in Sherman, D.C., and we are a CBE. And thank you for allowing me to make this presentation. I am, we're very concerned that we're soon not going to be able to provide health insurance for our employees. We did an analysis of the last three years, and this is what we found. Between 217 and 218, there was a 19.4 increase in our premiums. In 2008, the difference between 2018 and 219, we calculated that there was an 8% increase in our premiums. Between 2019 and 2020, there was a 7.2% increase. If we do aggregate, 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 we aggregate those percentages, that's a 38.7% increase in three years. And why we're really concerned is that the rate of inflation was never higher than 2.4% during this period. And so we're really nervous about what's going on and losing our ability, losing our ability to pay for the insurance. And one of the other factors for us too is that as a small contractor, even when we have contracts that have escalation clauses, we're never able to charge our clients more than a 3% increase in escalation. So we're not sure why these premiums are going, are much higher than the rate of inflation, the rate of national inflation. So we want to, we know that there's a problem here and we hope that we can figure out a way together. But these were the most important points that I wanted to make about the insurance, our insurance, our experience with the insurance premiums. Thank you.
Thank you, Evelyn. Next up is Karen Mack, followed by Yvette Austin, and then Lauren Farber.
Thank you and good evening. I don't have a prepared message, but I'm hoping that my message gets through. I was a little surprised to hear that the decision, it sounds like the decisions about these premiums have already been made. Perhaps that is not the case, but it sounds like it because September 15th is the date. If that's the case, I'm curious why this hearing didn't take place before that to be able to hear from people directly. So, and that came from Commissioner Woods. What I did appreciate hearing, though, was Mila Kaufman's statements on freezing the premiums. And the reason why that was pleasing, if I can even find pleasing, with my healthcare, and this is very personal. As an independent organization development consultant, I have been infect, I have been affected by COVID like lots of other people. I am independent. My healthcare has risen from 2010 at $212 a month. Now I'm paying $743.47 a month. That's my highest expense on a monthly basis. This year it'll be $9,000. I'm 60 years old, and so I realize that older people have to pay more. But I'm a healthy 60-year-old, and I struggle to pay this not wanting to lose my coverage. I'm afraid if it goes up again, I will lose it. So I was listening very carefully to the rates, and I will go to the website because unfortunately, Mr. Barlow, I couldn't see a thing in your slides. It was very, it was too small. So I'll need to look at that. The bottom line is, it seems as if individual, independent people who are paying out of their hearts for this insurance, that we're neglected. I don't work for a company. I can't, I can't afford, I don't, I don't have that luxury. I may have to go get a job and face ageism in order to be covered by healthcare. Right now, I do not go to the doctor because I can't afford the $6,000 deductible. It's a very precarious situation that I'm hoping will be taken into consideration. So to hear that the Health Benefit Exchange Authority has asked that the premiums be frozen for a year, not to go up, is, it helps. But at $743 a month, it doesn't help a whole lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mack. And to be clear, we have not made a final determination on the rates. That would come, that would come after this hearing where we get public input on the rates.
Thanks for saying that.
Next up is Yvette Austin, followed by Lauren Farber and Kristy Venable. Yvette? Okay. We will see if we can get her later. Lauren Farber, Kristy Venable, and then Al Goldberg.
Hi, yes, thank you so much for the opportunity to address this group, and thank you to everyone who's spoken. And particularly, thank you to Mila for your presentation. I think I felt very seen by that. So my statement is that we have a responsibility to ensure that healthcare is accessible and amidst a pandemic. This is a moral imperative. This pandemic has triggered an economic crisis, and the downstream effect of this is that people are losing access to stable coverage due to their employment status. I think that we are seeing that this is ridiculous to have healthcare tied to employment, but I know that that is not something that we are going to solve today in this meeting. I'm 32 years old. I've lived in D.C. since 2006. I lost my job in June, working for a small business, and with it, my employer provided coverage through the D.C. Exchange. It's not clear when I'm going to have steady, full-time employment, and Congress's dilution of duty in supporting citizens who've lost their jobs in this pandemic is something I feel specifically, and I know so many others do. Financially, I am the best version of a bad scenario, but raising premium rates would be, it would immediately impact my financial situation negatively and make it just harder than it is, and things are very hard. I understand the healthcare services have both value and cost, and I know it's rote to say it at this point, but these are extraordinary circumstances. Our national response to this crisis has been inadequate, and so it's on external actors to demonstrate leadership and good decision-making. Please do not make it harder for D.C. residents to access care for themselves, and don't make it harder for small businesses to maintain and grow their teams in this fraught moment. You have a role to play in our economic and pandemic recovery, and please do not condemn us for their losses. And the last thing I'll say is that through insurance, we could all use a whole lot more mental healthcare coverage. I think that this is something that is difficult for people. We need it more, now more than ever, but it's something that was a problem before there was a pandemic. I would encourage everyone to explore ways to make this financially viable for people. We are having historic losses in our country, and survival alone is not sufficient here. So thank you.
Sorry, I got to take it off mute. Next up is Kristy Venable, followed by Al Goldberg and Danara Williams.
Hello, this is Kristy Venable. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. My camera isn't working, so I'll just speak. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to speak today, and thank you to Mila for your presentation. It definitely was the reality of what we're facing. Again, my name is Kristy Venable, and I am the CEO of Smile Therapy Services. We are a CBE, small business located in the District of Columbia, and we provide mental health therapy to families in the district. I am here today to encourage a decrease, or as Mila suggested, a freeze, to the healthcare plans for this upcoming year. Currently, Smile, we are facing a 8.63% increase to our health plan. And currently, we are with Care First. And so this increase will put a major strain on our agency and our employees as we have experienced a decline in our revenue. We do not want to lose coverage for our employees. Healthcare should be affordable for all, and right now, that is not the case. Before I enrolled the company through the Health Link, I had individual coverage through Health Link, and the increase was outrageous and not affordable at all. We need relief right now as we are dealing with a major crisis throughout our nation. So I want to encourage and all of the insurance companies to please consider decreasing the rate to help all residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristy. Next up is Al Goldberg, followed by Danara Williams, and then Adrian. Al? Okay. Come back to Al, and let's try Danara Williams. Okay, and how about Adrian Williams? All right. The next three people that we have are David Jocinski, Brian Ortiz, and Mark Falzone. So we'll go next to David Jocinski.
Hi, this is David Jocinski. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. And I did try to put my camera back on, but I can't see myself, so hopefully it's, it's okay. There we go. So my name is David Jocinski. I'm a longtime D.C. resident, and my family has to get insurance via D.C. Health Link. I'm here today to discuss Care First catastrophic plans rate increase for 2021. I don't know how we got here, but somehow a 35% rate increase was proposed. This increase is not justified based on the loss ratio and risk adjustment transfer rules. In my comments, I'm going to be quite specific as to why it should not be allowed. And I'd like to thank Ms. Kaufman for her comments on this, and to Mr. Barry from Care First. I hope you're still listening to this hearing, because I think you'd like to hear what I have to say. Catastrophic plans are here to serve two groups. First, young people who otherwise may not get insurance. But second, it's about families like mine, who would have premiums that are considered unaffordable, but we are not subsidy-eligible. So in all cases for families like mine, our normal, if we get a catastrophic plan, our normal D.C. Health Link premiums for the cheapest our normal DC Health Link premiums for the cheapest plan would exceed 8.27% of our gross income. That cost is before things like taxes, rent, utilities, and of course, the cost of medical care below our very high deductibles. No catastrophic customer gets an ACA subsidy. We all foot the bill ourselves regardless of our income. This is unlike the metal plans, where a subsidy is frequently available through the federal government. I'm not an insurance expert, but I did my research when I saw this rate increase. The 2021 rates, as proposed, are based on the plan experience year of 2019. And here's where I get specific. In 2019, the loss ratio for the catastrophic plan was less than 50%. This detail was buried on page 124 of Care First 127-page proposed rate filing. The ACA rules require carriers to have a loss ratio averaging approximately 80%. All of the metal plans had loss ratios far higher than the catastrophic plan, and they seem to average out to roughly 80% loss ratio. Yet somehow Care First is proposing a 35% increase for catastrophic customers while increasing rates for metal plans by a small fraction of that. The ACA rules also state that risk adjustment transfers between catastrophic plans and metal tiers are not allowed. What is, what is being proposed is a backdoor shifting of the overall rate burden among customers of DC Health Link to those customers who purchase a catastrophic plan. Not only is it unfair, it also violates the loss ratio and risk adjustment rules of the Affordable Care Act. How can the DC Department of Insurance possibly support a 35% increase when the loss ratio in the plan experience year was less than 50%? Based on my research, when medical loss ratio is under 80%, customers are entitled to a rebate. Given the risk transfers are not allowed for catastrophic plans, and the loss ratio is under 50%, instead of a rate increase, perhaps Care First should be ordered by the Department of Insurance to send their catastrophic plan customers a rebate as required by the ACA. The increase appears to be a bureaucratic attempt to shift the insurance rate burden onto catastrophic customers. The ACA rules are very clear this type of risk adjustment is not allowed. The ACA legislation is also clear that loss ratio needs to be 80%. There is simply no way to approve any rate increase on catastrophic plans and have an acceptable loss ratio. In fact, I would contend the existing rates are already not compliant with the ACA guidelines on risk adjustment and loss ratios. I would be glad to hear the Care First representative, Mr. Barry, address the 35% increase while the loss ratio for the plan experience year is under 50% right now. I'd be glad to hear it. Thank you, and I am happy to be contacted for further discussions regarding this unjustified increase.
Thank you, David. I will say that the current proposal for the catastrophic plan is less than the originally proposed 35%, but we can take a look at the issues that you raised.
You were muted.
Sorry, I said a whole bunch of stuff was unmuted, but let me try this again. So, thank you, David, for your comments. I will point out that the Care First catastrophic plan proposed increase is less than the originally proposed 35%, but we will look at the issues. And then we will move on to Brian Ortiz, followed by Mark Falczone and Rebecca Barson. I think. I'm, I'm hearing something funny, so hold on just a second. Let me see if. Hold on, let me see if we can get some, some technical help on this, because we've got some sound issues in here. All right, so let's, let's try, let's try Mark Falczone, and then we'll try coming back to Brian. See you.
Okay. This is Mark Falczone. I am the president of Scenic America. We are a nonprofit that's based in DC. We're a national nonprofit. Our mission is to preserve and enhance the visual character and scenic beauty of our country. And we're small, you know, we're, we're a small business. We happen to be a nonprofit. We're proud to be based in DC. And, you know, let me start by, you know, thanking the insurance companies who did step up during COVID-19 and the crisis and everything that you did. We really appreciate that. I also want to thank Commissioner Woods and Associate Commissioner Barlow for your leadership during this time and trying to navigate through this. And obviously, you have some really important decisions that you'll be making in the next two weeks. So we really appreciate the thoughtfulness that you'll put into that. And I especially want to thank Ms. Kaufman, Mila Kaufman, for providing what, and just an excellent presentation. And truthfully, I could probably just end my testimony by saying I second everything that Ms. Kaufman said. So I really want to give a strong, strong endorsement of everything that she said, because truthfully, she pretty much laid out in much better detail than I could have ever, you know, the challenges that are facing small businesses and individuals in DC. And in my case, it's a small business. And so, you know, I was coming in asking actually to freeze all of the rates for 2020. Obviously, Ms. Kaufman has already done this. And so, let me just say that, you know, there's, COVID-19 is a, is brought, obviously, an unprecedented amount of uncertainty into the market. And obviously, it's also completely affected the economy and people's jobs and, and people's economic security. And so, in these unprecedented times, I think it only makes sense for, for DISB to, to put a freeze on any increases and to decrease rates where they can as well, where that's requested. You know, this is an, you know, these are unprecedented times, like I said. Between that and the idea that over the next year, when we are at this moment, a year from now, there will be way less uncertainty, we will know what has happened with COVID-19. There also may be changes in, in, in the federal government as far as shoring up the Affordable Care Act and things like that. So so many things that are unknown right now will be known next year. And, and because of the unprecedented economic times that COVID-19 has brought to us, from a policymaking perspective, I really just ask with all of my heart that DISB strongly consider Ms. Kaufman's recommendations and endorse them. And, and, and I would put in a further request to, to the insurance companies that are represented here today. Again, I, it's, it hasn't gone unnoticed, and again, I want to thank Ms. Kaufman for pointing out what you have done during COVID-19 to help people. But, you know, this is a way to further help folks and step up, and we would really appreciate it if you would actually, in the next, you know, few days, listen to the people on this call and, and listen to Ms. Kaufman's testimony and consider freezing yourselves, so that way you make DISB's job even easier, because you can step up and make that change yourself. And, and, you know, you have done so many things to help, why not step up and do this one thing that can really go a long way to helping the residents and the businesses of Washington DC? So with that said, I'm sure I've taken my three minutes. So I want to thank, again, the commissioner and the, and the associate commissioner for, for running this and for allowing the public input. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. And now let's try Brian Ortiz again and see if we've got our sound issues addressed. I, it's still funny to me, so maybe, Brian, you can try disconnecting and connecting again. All right, while we're waiting for that, maybe we. Oh, sorry, maybe while we're doing that, we can go to Rebecca Barson.
Great, thank you. Hear me?
Yeah.
Great, well, thank you to Commissioner Woods and to the, am I, do I also have the funny voice thing going?
I think you're good now.
Okay, great. Well, thank you to Commissioner Woods and to the department for allowing me to speak before you tonight. My name is Rebecca Barson, and I'm here to offer my input on the 2020, 2021 proposed individual health rate, health insurance rates for DC Health Link. So I'm presenting this testimony tonight from my perspective as a DC resident, a woman with pre-existing conditions, a DC Health Link customer, and the owner of a small health policy and advocacy consulting firm based here in DC. I also serve as a consumer member of the DC HBX Standing Advisory Board, though I'm speaking only in my personal capacity tonight. The ability to get comprehensive and affordable individual health insurance through the marketplaces created by the Affordable Care Act allowed me to pursue a lifelong goal and become self-employed in early 2016. Even with some ongoing health concerns, I have peace of mind knowing that I am covered by truly excellent health insurance that I can afford as a small business owner. This has been truly life-changing for me. This upcoming February, I will celebrate five years as the owner of a successful one-woman business, and the future continues to look bright. I am continually grateful for DC's strong commitment across the executive and legislative branches to ensuring everyone in the city has affordable insurance coverage through the marketplaces and Medicaid. I am particularly heartened by the rigorous rate review process that DISB oversees and the advocacy of DC Health Link for the lowest possible rates for individuals and small businesses. At this point, I have gotten used to the annual increases that come along with health insurance through DC Health Link, and have been fortunate that I have been able to absorb them relatively easily. In fact, in any other year, I might see an 8.65% increase for my own coverage through GHMSI and be relieved. However, this year, I find it particularly challenging to see and hear story after story about how many of my fellow self-employed colleagues have lost significant income during this pandemic and the significant economic and other suffering people in DC are enduring, and then also see these increases in premiums. I wonder how so many people I know are going to be able to afford them at a time when health insurance coverage is more important than ever. I'm glad to see that the rate review process has already resulted in significantly decreased rates, as the process seems to be working as it should. And I agree with Director Kaufman's ask to freeze premiums and urge the carriers and DISB to do whatever is in your power to ensure that no one in the individual market is paying more for coverage this year than they were last year. Thank you so much for your time today and the work that everyone has already put into this process. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Rebecca. And Brian, I think you disconnected and reconnected, so let's try again to see how that goes. So there is, there is a phone number, so if you go back to the link where you got this, maybe you can try calling in. Okay, so while we're, hopefully, hopefully we'll be able to get Brian's comments, but in the interim, the next three people are Gerald Lorenz, Wendy Williamson, and Debbie Hodnett. So Gerald Lorenz, if you are on the call.
Good evening, I'm Gerald Lorenz, and I have actually just one question that I would ask to be answered, pleased by Mr. Dillon, and if he would kindly forward the response to the commissioner, and then the commissioner could in turn email it to me. And this is my question, has to do with premiums, with the individual plan for Care First Blue Cross Blue Shield. And this is the question. In 2016, the premium was $269.24, and in 2020, the premium was $803.08. That's a $533.84 increase per month, amounting to almost 200% increase, and nothing else in our economy increased by anything like that, with that magnitude. So I just want an understanding in a detailed fashion of what the analysis was that allowed for that kind of increase. That'd be very, very helpful to me. And maybe you can factor into that the risk-based capital ratio that was also employed, so we could better understand the nature of that. Because that kind of rate increase does not make sense, again, in, in looking at the economy as a whole, in terms of inflation, in terms of increase in wages, in terms of productivity, GDP, nothing of the sort. So the more detailed and the more thorough the analysis that you can provide, for me, it actually, I would ask that you share it to everybody, it's not just for me, it's for all of us to understand the nature and the method of the allowance and the understanding and the recommendations that have been offered to date. So that concludes my question, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Since you did include some premiums in your question, would you be willing to send that question into the health rate comments, so that we have the detail?
Yes, I'll do that at the, at the close of the presentation this evening. Do I direct it to the commissioner?
That would be fine. You, you could do that, or you could send it to me. I'm, I'm the one probably that will work on getting.
Okay, I will send it to you. Thank you.
Okay, sure. All right. I see Brian is back. Let's see if we can, let's see how it could work this time. Do you?
Hi, this is Brian Ortiz. Can you hear me now?
All right.
Sorry, first-time Teams user, so maybe my computer doesn't like it. In any case, so myself and my husband, we're self-employed. We've been getting insurance through the marketplace here for four years, and my comments don't address COVID in any way. It is, I would say, pre-COVID outlook, which I think was already dire as far as healthcare costs go. I sent my comments in by email and looking at our premiums as they've increased over the last four years, 11%, 21%, 13.5%. So in four years, we're paying 53% more than we were four years ago. At best, you know, freeze or a 1% increase, next year would be great in normal times. But the trend was going up, you know, at least 10% every year for us. By the time I turn 65, we'll be paying $100,000 a year. That's completely unaffordable, it makes no sense. So I'd like to understand better why the trend of these healthcare costs keep going up. I know you all are doing your job on the insurance side to try to keep the, our rates down, but it all seems completely unaffordable. We're the healthy people paying into the system. We barely use it. We go to our doctor once a year. I had one incident two years ago, emergency room for an appendectomy. Thank God I had insurance, but I still had to pay the full deductible to cover the cost after insurance. If I hadn't had the insurance, we would have paid out of pocket, but we still would have been better off. It would have cost us less to pay that amount than what we've been paying in premiums up to now. As far as next year, 2021, we're considering dropping the insurance altogether. Our money would be better off invested elsewhere, it would bring us more benefit and cover our same healthcare needs. But we understand that that also does not benefit the rest of the system. So somewhere, there needs to be a balance between people like us paying in who aren't using it in order to benefit everyone else who is in the system, who desperately need it, and probably are getting more out of it than they're paying in. So I understand it's vastly complicated. I do appreciate the discussion that you all gave this evening. It's our first time participating in it, but I will leave it at that for this evening's comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. I'm glad we were able to finally get that in. And next up is Wendy Williamson, who I believe has spoken at every ACA rate hearing we have ever had.
Hello? I don't know if you can hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Wendy.
Well, yes, I have spoken at every hearing, so thank you for, first, for having the hearing and allowing myself and others to either continue our requests or at least ask about to either continue our requests or at least ask about them. I'm just going to follow up coincidentally with Gerald, who spoke a few minutes ago. My 2015 monthly health insurance through Care First, Blue Cross Blue Shield, the PPO plan, because I'd like to pick my doctor, but it was also an HSA plan because I wanted to get an additional tax benefit. So I would put an additional, at least $3,000 a month into a health savings account. But for 2015, my monthly payment was $326.82. My 2020 monthly payment is $549.46. That is the Bronze Plan, PPO, HSA. So the difference between 2015 and 2020 is 68%. Now, I don't know about any of you, but I have not gotten a 68% raise increase. I do not get any 68% deductions in my homeowner's insurance or my mortgage. So my monthly Care First bill is one of my biggest expenses after my mortgage. So if we add up, which is what I do every year for you all, my total monthly insurance premium for the year is $6,593. If I add the HSA, which I like to have to help pay for expenses, might as well get a tax credit for it, is $3,550. That total is over $10,000. That's just for insurance and HSA. If I were to have a major health crisis or issue, if I added in the deductible in-network and out-of-pocket, that total would be over $28,000. And that's money I don't have readily. If someone would like to donate it, I'll take it. But another thing to consider, which my primary doctor is going to be starting to do at the end of the year, is she is going to become a concierge doctor. So she will be off the insurance industry. She's going to be cash. Now, she could submit things to the insurance company, but when I called Care First, they said that it is unlikely they will cover it because she is out of network. She is a concierge doctor. And I am discovering that among my friends and some other people in the DC, Virginia, Maryland area, more doctors are going the concierge way. And a lot of people can't find doctors who, new doctors, because a lot of doctors aren't taking new patients at this time. On top of that, you've got COVID, which is a complete mess for everybody. And I think more, as more people are getting laid off, they're going to have a quandary. Do I get on the Health Link and get insurance? Or do I get insurance and not pay groceries or other bills because they've been laid off? So I do think financially, I think 2020 is just, let's just close the book on 2020. Let's just freeze the rate and, and just call it a day. And, you know, let's look at the financials next year because there are so many variables and unknowns of how this is going to go forward in terms of insurance. But what I do know is that it's becoming, it's becoming unaffordable for people who really need it. So that's, that's all I got this year for you all. So thank you again to everybody and to my fellow presenters. I wish you good health, and thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Next up is Debbie Hodnett, followed by Stephen Rodriguez, and then Natalie Settler. Debbie? Okay, how about Stephen Rodriguez? Natalie Settler? All right, the next three are Gil Pennantel, Rebecca Duncan, and Suzy French. How about Gil? Rebecca Duncan?
Yeah, I'm here.
Oh, sorry, this is Gil?
Yes.
Okay, great. Go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to say that the gig economy is real. I spent 17 years working at ABC News, 12 at National Geographic, and for the last seven, I've been working independently as a video production consultant. I'm an independent contractor to my clients, less glamorously known as a freelancer, and even much less glamorously known as a gig worker. But it's all the same thing. We're all gig workers. And when I worked at National Geographic here in DC, most of the producers, most of the video editors were full-time staff with health benefits. Today, most of them are contractors, and they're brought in on a project-by-project basis. That's how I'm hired, on a project-by-project basis. And that's true of the camera operators, the graphic artists, the script writers, the videotape editors, the colorists, the sound designers. They're all hired on the same basis. We're a team that comes together for one project, and then the team disperses as each member of that team moves on to whatever their next project is. I get my insurance through the Affordable Care Act, as do most of the people that I work with these days. And then there are lucky ones whose, whose insurance comes because they're married to somebody who's still working, you know, at a corporate job, but most of us in my industry right now are freelancers. Most of us are getting our insurance through ACA. And, and the, the number of people like us is growing. McKinsey is saying that 25% of the American labor force had worked at least part-time in, in, last month, last month, 25% of Americans were employed at least partially in the gig economy, and 10% of all American workers now are, are full-time gig workers, full-time project workers like me. You may have better numbers in this than I do, but DC is believed to have a much higher percentage of gig workers than the national average. In this city, they run the gamut of occupations, they might run the gamut of races, and they run the gamut of education levels. There are consultants like me, there are film editors, salespeople, actors, SAT coaches, music teachers, makeup artists, Uber drivers, and we, all of us are relying on ACA to get it. When I first signed up with, with ACA, my premium was $529 a month. And I'm just echoing what everybody else has been saying here. Four years ago, in 2017, my premium was $629 a month. Today, my premium for what I used to get at National Geographic is $1,006 a month. I'm a single guy. I, I have no, no major health issues. I, I, I get my, my health checkup once a year, and I thought, well, you know, it's my patriotic duty because as, as a healthy 60-year-old, then I'm helping to pay the insurance premium for, for people who can afford it less. This is what I should be doing, and I'm fine with it. But that's during a healthy, that's during a good economy. What's happened this year is that the, the, the bottom has dropped out through my industry, and it affects a lot of people in the Washington area. You know, we were having trouble before because Discovery was such a huge market force for people who do what I do, and Discovery left. And so there's National Geographic, the, the three networks are all pulling back their production in Washington. So there are a lot of people in this town doing what I do who, who are hurting. My, my own income, I'm 60, my own income has dropped to the level where, to a level I haven't seen in 30 years. I mean, it's, at age 28, I am making as much money as I make now. And yet, at the same time, I am paying vastly more than I've ever paid for health insurance. Why my health insurance in four years has gone up 60%, 60%, when, I mean, I don't see any justification for it in, 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 in the, the greater economy, how it could have gotten to that point. So I am absolutely with everybody else who is advocating for a, a complete freeze, but not only a freeze, a rollback of, of the premiums. And I, I understand that the, the insurance companies need to be made whole, that they're facing their own set of challenges because the challenges of, of COVID are unprecedented. But in, you know, there, there, there was a time in the, in the last financial challenge of 2008 and 2009 where we decided that some insurance companies were too big to fail. And I think we just need to turn that paradigm on its head, given where we are today, that the government and the insurance companies are too big to let taxpayers fail. That, that when we are where we are right now, we need that support that says, "Do not raise those premiums." And, and Ms. Kaufman earlier, I, I, I wasn't familiar with her, but the, the woman who gave the presentation, the financial presentation, she was spot-on. I hope you, I hope you guys listened to that. And, and, and I, I hope it has an impact because people in this city are, are hurting right now. And, and, and the hurt is not necessarily visible to you. You know, the hurt is also affecting the, the, the people with the, the nice button-down collars and the people who are living in, in nice neighborhoods who don't have the income anymore. It hurts everybody. The hurt is across the board right now. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Rebecca Duncan, followed by Suzy French and Laura Dunn. Rebecca Duncan. Suzy French. Laura Dunn. All right, after that is Justine Talis Reeves, Carol Spring, and Manuela Silvestri. Justine? Carol? Manuela?
This is Carol Spring.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Carol. Go ahead.
All right, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. My name is Carol Spring. Okay, my name is Carol Spring, and I'm a DC resident. I'm a freelance artist educator, and I've been purchasing health insurance for myself on the open market in DC since 2004. In that time, my monthly premiums have more than doubled even as I moved to a much higher deductible plan to save costs. This is hardly the time to be raising the costs for healthcare. In the middle of a pandemic, health insurance is not only a human right, it's critical for public health for everyone. I lost income this year. I really identified with the other speaker who was talking about the gig economy. Along with most of my colleagues, and many of us are scrambling to pay the bills. Lower-income workers like me are already paying too high a percentage of our income on health insurance, making it difficult to make ends meet. Even though my plan is, has a higher deductible, the monthly cost is still a significant portion of my income, and it's increased dramatically each year. I can't imagine how I and my colleagues will be able to pay if these dramatic increases continue. Last fall, I was in a traffic accident, and I suffered a traumatic brain injury. My one-night stay in the hospital maxed out my deductible. Even if a person like me is otherwise in good health, accidents and illnesses can occur by no fault of our own and hugely increase our healthcare costs. In this time, the government can't control the constantly rising costs of housing and food, but you can control the costs of healthcare. So please, I urge you to consider what Ms. Kaufman said, to accept the rate decreases and freeze the premiums at the 2020 levels. Healthcare is a basic human right and needs to be more accessible, not less. Increasing access to healthcare will promote better public health for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Manuela Silvestri? Carja Carr?
Hi.
Hi.
This is Carja. I'll, I'll just be very, very brief. I, I've actually been purchasing my health insurance through the DC Health Link since 2018. In 2018, my monthly premium for Care First Blue Cross Blue Shield was about $350. And in 2019, this monthly premium increased about 10% to almost $400 a month for a Silver Plan. I currently pay about the same amount for a monthly Bronze Plan with Care First Blue Cross Blue Shield. And my decision to opt for a Bronze Plan this year is mainly because this is what I could afford, and it's the cheapest plan, and I can't afford a Silver Plan anymore. And, you know, I'm paying almost $5,000 a year for this plan, and my yearly deductible out-of-pocket expenses are $6,200. That's about $11,200 for just one person, and it's just not affordable. You know, Care First proposed health insurance premiums are not affordable. I could barely afford a 1% increase, and I'm certain, as you've heard other callers here on, on the call, they can't afford it either. You know, I'd really like to continue living and working here in DC, and I just urge the insurance providers to, to keep the health insurance premium low and affordable for everyone. And, you know, just stop the rate increases. Thanks.
Thank you. I believe that June Lockland indicated that she wasn't able to stay. So how about Michonne Boston?
Thank you for this opportunity to speak on the impact of rising healthcare costs. I also want to acknowledge the healthcare, medical, hospital workers on the front lines during this pandemic. We're all affected by the gross inequities in the healthcare system in this nation, which this COVID emergency has made quite evident and visible. In 2006, when I decided I wanted to be self-employed, my decision was based on one factor, and that's healthcare. If I wasn't able to secure healthcare, it wouldn't be able, I wouldn't be able to fulfill this dream. At that time, my choices were to either get healthcare outside my full employment, of course, which would mean paying the full price, that was impossible, or join an organization that had a group policy, pay the annual dues, and access their benefits. That's what I did, and it worked for as long as the organization offered members those benefits. The Affordable Care Act has been a lifeline since it was made into law. I am grateful for DC Health Link, though the process of open enrollment can be frustrating. Because of the critical need for affordable healthcare, I do whatever it takes to keep the plan I have through the DC Health Link. In contract work, you don't get base pay or guaranteed salary, but I always say, if I can figure out the healthcare, I can figure out the rest. Unfortunately, rising premiums, co-pays, and deductibles are making it difficult to figure out the rest, along with diminishing contracts over the past year. out the rest, along with diminishing contracts over the past year. In 2009, it was estimated that you needed $143,200 if you're paying a mortgage, and $122,900 if you're renting to live in DC comfortably. To date, I have taken in less than $30,000 in contracts for 2020. From that, I have to pay for home expenses like mortgage, plus the appropriate taxes, home insurance, utilities for cooling, heating, and cooking, food and other household necessities, transportation, because I have to keep my car and pay insurance to help family members during this emergency. For business, I have to pay payroll expenses just for myself to make sure the district and the federal governments get their proper deductions, that they're correct, and I have a record of the employer and employee taxes I pay. I pay licensing fees, business insurance, internet, cell phone, and telephone service, office supplies, and online conference services like this one we're on now, and other applications which are absolutely necessary for my work, especially during the COVID emergency. Yes, I made some good decisions early enough, but those good decisions are being wiped out by the rising cost of healthcare that's also triggered by my pre-existing condition of being an African-American woman over the age of 40. With the COVID crisis, at least for the next year, none of us can be about business as usual, especially in raising healthcare rates. I want to keep the insurance I have because I have a great team of doctors, and I need them right now, and I need affordable healthcare as much as I need air to breathe. So I ask you to please, please freeze the increases and decrease those increases for the healthcare plans for 2021. Thank you.
Next up is Lee Bethel. I believe that Christopher Wingert also had to leave. All right. And then Angela Franco.
I'm here. Just let me, okay.
Good. Go ahead.
Yeah, just give me a minute. Good evening. Can you hear me, can you hear me well?
Yes, perfect.
Okay. Good evening, Commissioner Woods. My name is Angela Franco, interim president and CEO at the DC Chamber of Commerce. We appreciate the opportunity to provide comments on the proposed 2021 health insurance rates for health benefit plans on the DC Health Benefit Exchange Authority, known as DC Health Link. As a continuing partner with DC Health Link, the chamber represents approximately 1,400 member companies of all sizes and industries, and the hundreds of thousands of individuals they employ. We are pleased that Aetna Care First, Blue Shields, Kaiser Permanente are members of the DC Chamber, and they help us inform small businesses of the changing healthcare landscape in the private sector and shifting market trends. According to the census, DC Health Link has the second-lowest insured rates in the nation with 97% of its residents insured. As the nation navigates through the COVID-19 pandemic, the DC Health Benefit Exchange Authority responded by creating special enrollment periods with easy online enrollment, minimal paperwork, and free expert enrollment support. The DC Chamber of Commerce has worked closely with the CHBX, reached out to small businesses, employees, people transitioning to unemployment, and who are, and people who are unemployed to make sure everyone is covered. During these difficult times, we need to make sure everyone has health insurance coverage or is covered. As you review the rates, we encourage you to think about keeping the lowest rates possible in order to minimize the impact on small businesses, individuals, and families not being able to afford health insurance. We appreciate Commissioner Woods and the council's support of ensuring businesses and individuals are protected during this economic downturn. The chamber, along with the insurance provider community, is making sure support is provided to keep our communities healthy. Again, thank you so much for your time and for giving us an opportunity to provide testimony today.
Thank you. We did have a couple of people who asked to be added to the list, so next we will go to Michael Jones.
Hi, thank you very much. My name is Michael Jones. I'm a 50-year-old self-employed home improvement contractor in Mount Pleasant, healthy, luckily. In the beginning of the pandemic, I had to deliver food for three months for like DoorDash and other companies. It's the, actually, NBC was talking about the gig economy because no one wanted to have anyone come in their house to paint their bedroom. And so I did that to survive. I have the cheapest bronze Care First plan available, open access, Blue Choice, HMO, HSA, bronze plan. One of the problems is that we don't have any choices anymore. A few years ago, when ACA started, we had a few options, but everyone else has dropped out except for Care First and Kaiser, and it's not really the same thing because if I pick Kaiser, then I can't see my doctor. So we really only have one choice as an individual. And there was a problem a few years ago where they actually removed all the HSA plans. There were no HSA plans available for some reason that I never figured out. As others have testified, our premiums have gone up dramatically in the past years, and I was just going through research and history while this meeting's been going on. In 2014, when I had Aetna, the last time they were in DC, my premium was $146 a month, and that was for about a $2,000 deductible. And they left the market because I had to switch to Care First. In 2016, it went up to $176 a month. In 2018, it went to $354 a month, and now this year it's $487 a month, and that's for a $6,200 a year deductible. So in four years, it's gone, my premium has gone up 276%, and in six years, it's gone up 333%, and that's for worse coverage because I started out at a $2,000 deductible, now it's $6,200. So if you add now, my annual premium cost is $5,850 a year, and I have to pay $6,200 premiums. I have to pay $12,050 out-of-pocket before they even start covering. I only make average around $75,000 a year in a good year, so that's like 16% of my income. And this is the lowest, cheapest bronze plan available to me. So it's just not affordable. And the other thing is, when we talk about raises, you say, oh, well, it's a 5% or 10% raise this year, but that's compounded year over year because it's 13% of the previous 21%, of the previous 30% raise. So it's just like interest rates. It just keeps going up and up and up. So really, the ACA is now becoming the UCA, it's the Unaffordable Care Act. Mila mentioned earlier there was a catastrophic option. I was unaware of that and don't know if I'm eligible for that or not. I will say that Care First did offer a temporary three-month delay in my premiums this year, but they have not offered any credits. It was someone else testified for businesses. And it was also said that they were offering a year to repay. That was also not offered. In fact, right now I'm in delinquent status, and the last time I talked to them, they said they were going to take those three months, divide it up among the rest of the year, and I was going to have to make it all up by the end of the year. So that's sort of helpful, but not really. The other thing I will appreciate, Blue Cross, they did receive a three-month free telehealth counseling services, which I took advantage of, but that's never, I do appreciate that. And I guess as far as the companies, I would say, the actuary that spoke earlier was talking about the premiums, having to make sure the insurers have enough to pay the claims. Well, I was just looking at the letters that Care First sends to DISB every year, and at the end of 2019, their surplus from their group rate insurance was $1.44 billion. So I don't know how much more of a surplus they need to cover the cost, but that would seem to be sufficient. So I guess in closing, I would say I would certainly recommend a decrease in rates in any case, regardless if we had COVID or not. And thank you.
Thank you. Would you be willing to send us an email, because I don't know that we have your information, but would you be willing to send us an email to thehealthratecomments@dc.gov email address and explain what's going on with your premium deferral?
I'd be happy to. Where should I send it?
The place where you, the place where you--
Where I got the link meeting?
Got the link to the meeting. There's an email address there, healthratecomments@dc.gov.
But the email I got is info@dchealthlink.com.
No, the link, so when you link to get to the, well, anyway, help. If you go to, well, here, okay. Somebody will send it to you in the chat room.
Okay, great.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
And then next up is Margarita Delone. And I think you're still on mute.
Is that a mute? Perfect. Okay. Thank you, all of you. I know it's the end of the night, and I really want to be very thankful and grateful to Commissioner, sorry, Karema Woods, and also to everybody at DISB because this is extraordinary, your extra time here, and as well as to Mila Kaufman for your testimony. And let me also express some gratitude for our mayor. Our mayor, you know, appointed Karema. Excellent, excellent choice. So I did turn in written testimony, and I know it's late, so I'm not really going to read all of that, but I do want to emphasize and second the motion that Mila Kaufman gave about freezing the rates where an increase has been requested and accepting the rate decreases where the companies have stated the decreases, and obviously with a look forward to reanalyzing that when it's available. I want to, more than anything, also point out the fact of the healthcare disparities, even though we cannot, in this forum, really address those as much, but there's a couple of things that I would like to address. For example, I know bringing up the subject of hopefully doing reinsurance or considering that for next year to possibly help maintain rates lower. Reinsurance will help us tremendously. They helped in the state of Maryland, and I think it's something that the District of Columbia needs to consider. The other thing that I would say, as someone who markets these plans, we need to make sure, especially, for example, Mr. Jones, who's on the line, for you to realize that, provide that summary of contraceptive and preventative care, the summary that's available by most of the plans, I know Care First offers it. The other companies need to also make sure they offer them and offer them in other languages. They don't have them available in Spanish or in American or in Vietnamese. These are a summary of the things that are free under the ACA for you to make sure that you have access to and that you know that are free. And the reason for that, for instance, your annual physical, you don't have to meet the deductible, you don't have to meet the copays. So for those people that are healthy, they need to realize that these benefits are available, and a lot of people do not realize that. A lot of people do not realize that they have the deductible and that that means that they have to meet that deductible every year, even for that, you know, for an annual physical, or that they always have to pay the full deductible, and that's not necessarily the case. Also, we are not, we haven't offered a silver-level HSA in a couple of years, and that's something that I think the insurance companies need to be pressured to offer that silver-level HSA. It goes from the bronze level straight to the gold level when it comes to the HSA, and that is an option, and people need to be aware of how to use it. Maybe the DISB can do some outreach to help people know about that. But what I'm really concerned about, small businesses in this COVID and individuals that cannot afford these increases in many cases, and the amount, the healthcare disparities in our African-American and Latino communities is extraordinary, and COVID has just brought that more to the front, especially right now, we're looking at a substantial impact on closing of small businesses in the African-American and Latino communities, and it's frankly scaring me. As somebody who sits on the board for the Greater Washington Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, for Metro DC Hispanic Contractors, for the Insurance Agents Association locally, and a few other boards, I'm scared, and we need help. And anything that the DISB can do, I'm all for it, and I'm willing to help. So please, accept that offer of help. I'm here for the community. I think I've proven that. I'm a DC native, and thank you.
I've got to take me off mute. Thank you. And that's the end of our list. So at the risk of keeping us here longer, I guess we can ask if there's anybody else who would like to make a comment before we close the meeting. And Sheila, you've raised your hand. Are you interested in making a comment?
Nope, that was a mistake. Sorry.
All right. Hearing no comments, I guess I can turn it back to see if the commissioner has any closing
I'll be brief, but I just want to thank you all for, one, participating in today's hearing. I thank you for your advocacy. I thank you for sharing your personal stories, and we will definitely take it all under consideration. And as mentioned in my remarks earlier, we will post the outcome of the hearing and the rates in a couple of weeks, so please be on the lookout for that on our website. But again, thank you all for your participation today.